Call to order. Secretary, please start the recording. Call to order of the October 6th, 2021 work session of the Eagle Point School District 9 Board of Directors. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. McIntyre?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Struttenberg?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mr. Kovac?
Here.
Um, announcements? Uh, the board calendar. Please note any changes have been highlighted. Lots of changes. Okay, changes. I don't think that's supposed to be highlighting. On mine, the whole like top is highlighted. I don't think that's supposed to be. Mine is super weird. Okay, so never mind mine. Does anybody have the single lines highlighted? Did you, did anything change?
I don't think it did really.
Oh, the 28th is that listening session. Uh, that's not actually on here.
It was not on.
Because it's not a board calendar item. Okay, never mind.
And is that the same with the training that we were doing with the OSBA? Is that in November?
That is in November.
That's November.
A work session.
Work session.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Okay.
Any questions or comments about the calendar?
Okay.
Moving on. Um, and as of now, that listening session is still in person, right? As of this moment, that listening session is still in person?
It is, and I think it's going to be.
And I'm gonna go to that. Uh, it's Thursday night. It's at the, uh...
Rogue Regency?
Oh, is it usually at Lark's? It, uh, down... Okay, then.
It may be moved because I think there's seeking more space.
Okay.
Like, I should let, uh, EST know that they could use one of our gyms if they wanted to.
Oh, we're so nice. Uh, and that's closer to us, that's amazing. Um, I think it'd be really great to go to this if we can. I mean, no, no, no pressure or anything, but, um, I do think this is gonna be a time to like voice our thoughts and feelings on how we're feeling that OSBA is supporting us. At least I did, um, talk to Dawn, like emailed Dawn Watson. I'm gonna talk to her. Um, and she's like on the board or in relation to the board or something. She's connected to the board and I'm forgetting how. Um, and I kinda sent her an email just kinda going to run down if I'm just not real thrilled with everything that's going on. And, and she said that she felt like this would be being addressed, um, access a little bit. So, um, I'm gonna go. I'll definitely fill you in if you guys can't go, but, um, if you have time and you wanted to.
And which one is this one again, Emily?
This is October 28th. It's at the Rogue Regency. It's a Thursday. I don't know what time it starts. It's evening. Usually they serve dinner. Um...
It was scheduled to have dinner at 6:00 and, and, um, start the listening session at 6:30. They are talking about canceling the dinner at the Little Rocker location. Some more details will be coming out soon.
Okay, and if you wanna go, just let Stacy know and then she'll RSVP for you. Okay, introduction, any questions? Comments? Okay.
And more answers.
Oh. And the budget committee still has two vacancies. Budget committee? Okay, um... Uh, okay, so well, I've had a couple, I've had a couple phone calls about it, but if you guys can think of anybody you can, you can, that would be a good... That'd be awesome.
And it's been on my list to do something. Recruiting on that. I just need to find half hour, 45 minutes and just make some phone calls.
Yeah, okay. Well, I thought somebody was gonna do it, but I guess not. Introductions to the new administrative staff. Mr. Kovac.
Oh, okay. New administrative staff. So, Mr. Hayball, can you step on up here? He's our first victim today. Uh, why don't you stand in the middle? We'll put the, uh, spotlight on you and make it... This is Mr. Grant Hayball. He's our new Eagle Rock Elementary Principal. We hired him out of, came and brought him out of Colton here. Um, Colton's a little town up north next to, uh, Takeda. And, uh, he had a very busy summer. Had some family issues that kept him from getting in here and jumped into the seat here in August and has been guiding that, that school for us since then. Grant, can you tell us a little bit about your background?
Um, yeah, so, uh, I was born and raised up north, Sandy, Oregon. Um, graduated from Lynnfield College. I was summer in a water pole player in high school and college. And then I went on to get my masters at Portland State University. And so, and I got into education, coaching, uh, swimming, water pole, shopping, right? And, uh, and then, uh, spent some years down in Grants Pass School District, uh, where I got my administration license and then had the opportunity to be the land job up north in administration. And so, uh, we moved close to family, but we kinda left family down here in Southern Oregon. And so, uh, we started getting the inkling. We wanted to raise our three kids down in Southern Oregon. And so, we started booking and had a chance to interview with Andy and, uh, the good people of Eagle Rock. And so, you know, wham bam, my family comes down and my wife gets a job at Hillside too as a fourth grade teacher. So, it's been a great, great situation for my family. And then, uh, my brother is a special education teacher at Table Rock. So, kinda recruited and brought some other folks with me. So, uh, it's a great, great little community. And, uh, where I came from, Colton, is not so far from, uh, you know, Eagle Point and, and the type of demographic and community. So, it's been a wonderful fit for me so far. So, I appreciate the opportunity to serve at that school and serve the community.
Excellent. Thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
Mason. Uh, so many of you guys may know Mason Marshall. He's worked at the school district now for, how long have you been with us?
My 20th year.
20 years.
20 years. Has done a variety of jobs for us. Uh, last year he worked as a, a technology instructional coach. We had him working out of the high school, though that was a district position. The position came open for principal over at the middle school. Um, we went through candidates somehow or another. Mason rose to the top. So, we all gave an opportunity to just step over there and take him. Mason, can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, somehow, per from another, I don't know. Yeah, uh, I, I grew up in, uh, Chaboy, Wisconsin. Um, all my family is back there. And I'm often asked, why didn't you move back to Wisconsin? And the reason is, 20 years ago, this lovely lady hired me. Um, Joanie hired me at, uh, Glindy Hill, for those who know where that was. And started teaching fifth grade. And, uh, I, I love the community. I love my families, the students, and I, so I, I stayed here. Like I said, 20th year, 24th year in education. Yeah, I did start out at Glindy Hill teaching fifth grade and then moved into, well, well, totally moved into Eagle Rock. I gotta remember. Moved into Eagle Rock Elementary. Went through the admin program, Joanie, that year or the next year was split between two schools. So, I kinda did an intern for one year, stepped in when she was gone. And then Joanie asked me, the next year we come to Eagle Point Middle School, I said, no. And she asked me the next year, I said, yes, I'm coming. So, came and actually taught technology for a year and then the one-to-one iPads came and that class went away. And then I started teaching, uh, math and language arts, I believe, and then sixth grade math. And then in November, I did make transition into the high school as an instructional coach. Crazy year, of course. And then, um, I did apply for Grant's job. Grant's a great kid there. And I know that, um, God has a place for me and put me where I needed to be. And, uh, that's the middle school. Just so you guys know, if you don't know, um, the kids and families are broken and we're chasing a lot of behavior. I think we're making an impact at the middle school. Um, but, but yeah, we, there's a lot of work to do. I feel, I know that I'm the right man to do it. And we're gonna make this middle school the best place to be. So, I'm excited and thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it. Excellent.
Thank you. Couple things about that going on is, um... We really have thrown him into the defense. Normally, a, a new administrator would, would move into a vice principalship or, or some sort of a supporting role before they took on a principalship. And middle schools are notorious for being challenging just because of the age group and, and, you know, you have a little bit of both worlds. Um, so, um, it's a part of the world that we have been going through over the last two years is, is we're giving leadership roles to people, um, quickly and, you know, asking a lot of them that, uh, what they need to do. At the middle school, we have, um, uh, behavior issues going on across the district. It's just, again, part of the world we're in. These kids have been out of school now for almost a year, two years, depending on, on the child. And we're, we see the behaviors. We were understaffed in every one of our schools, but we really experienced some difficulties at the, at Eagle Point Middle School last year. Mason's done a good job of getting out of the gate, getting in front of those things, starting to, to restore some, um, better expectations with our kids. And we appreciate that work. It's a tough job.
Can I say one more thing? I, when I say the kids are broken, the families are broken, I, I don't know that I can count on my fingers how many suicide streams we've done in four weeks. Several have been committed to the hospital. We're, we're in a tough place in our society right now. So, anyway, I, just your thoughts and prayers or whatever about that. And then, you know, it's hard. And the behavior piece, yeah, it's, it's, it's happening everywhere. I mean, I talked to friends that are administrators. My sister is a minister. She's now in Oklahoma City, inner city. And when I talk to her about our problems, I mean, it's nothing compared to what she's dealing with. But, with that being said, um, yeah, we, I, I know you guys are a great team. You know, I've had some of your children and some of you have coached for me and, um... But anyway, we, we do need the thoughts and prayers, whatever. I just keep us, all of us. Yeah, thank you.
By the way, one of his duties was driving the football team yesterday.
Yeah. Yes.
He was excellent.
So he has a fallback role. Uh, the next one, uh, isn't available today is Miss, Mrs. Jody Joe. She's a teacher over in Medford School District that we're bringing over as a VP. It was an August hire. Um, the way, um, most contracts work is the, the district where somebody works can retain that person for 60 days until they come over. So, we've been playing chicken with Medford School District on, you know, we will trade you this one, if you, to release this one early, if you will. They said, you know, they needed to, they couldn't find a replacement for her in her role over there, so they are holding on to her. Um, I believe she comes on here next week, late off, late October or middle October for us. And she'll be on in, and I'll bring her to you to introduce her. Ms. Sarah Hamilton.
Hi, good morning. Uh, so I'm Sarah. I'm the Assistant Principal at Table Rock Elementary. And, uh, grew up in Boise and, um, then lived in Denver for 18 years where I was a bilingual kindergarten, first grade, third grade, fourth grade classroom teacher, uh, ELD teacher. So, that's my background is bilingual and, uh, language learning. And did a, um, an assistant principal internship program there, uh, for the University of Denver. And worked in our central office, uh, running, helping to run the summer academy program where I wrote curriculum for English Language Development, paired literacy, which is our Spanish curriculum that was used in third, fourth, and fifth grade to pair with the English curriculum, as well as did all of the facilitation and training for teachers, site leaders, and coaching, coaches for our summer academy program. So, now I'm at Table Rock. So, this is my 20th year in education.
Thank you, Sarah. The last one is another no-show. And again, we'll bring her in front of you here at the future board meeting. Her name is Dr. Karen McKenzie. Um, we have several large grants that we've been managing here over the last, um, last 18, 20 months. Actually, the biggest one is SIA. We've been managing that one for years. Those grants are, are fully funded. They're big responsibilities. There's a lot of reports and, and data that needs to be submitted to the Department of Ed. So, we asked, um, um, Dr. McKenzie to come in and, and work with us on those grants. Goes to what we talked about, um, last meeting too. And once we, we feel like she has her hands around those larger grants, then, um, we are gonna have her start working on finding additional grants out there for us to have. That's it.
Nice. Thank you. Any questions or comments or anything? Thank you guys so much for coming in. We really appreciate you joining our team. We look forward to hearing and seeing all the good things. And we do just have some great, great, amazing families and kids in this district. And, um, and we all just, we're all here for the kids. So, we just really appreciate you guys. So, thank you. And, um, you do not have to stay for the meeting if you do not want to stay. You're welcome to stay.
Good news, I have another meeting.
Well, thank you guys so much for coming.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. Let's give it one more round. Okay, and then moving on to athletics and activities update with Ms. McMillan.
Okay. So, some things that we're doing to upgrade and maintain our facility. Softball, we're getting, uh, fence toppers to go around the entire softball field. Redoing those or replacing those. Uh, we're gonna change the softball field to, uh, to a sod field, entirely sod. There, there's not gonna be a warning track. We've had issues with goat heads and can't keep them out of there. So, we're gonna sod the entire field all the way back. And that's gonna take a little bit of maintenance, um, effort there. The sod is ordered, the toppers are ordered. And we just got new hitting nets for the softball program. Baseball program, we're thatching and aerating and overseeding the baseball fields. We have Hall of Fame recognition coming up on October 22nd, which is a big deal. We haven't, uh, we haven't had an induction in several years. We've only ever had one induction. We have five people in our Hall of Fame. We're inducting six individuals on one team. See if I, I sent out some information, see if I can remember all of the individual. I, I'm not going to be able to. 1947 state champion, uh, tennis player. What else do we have? Uh, softball player, all-state pitcher from 1956. State champion runner, Steve Lode. Phil Cam, football wrestling. And who else? I'm not sure. 1978 football team, or baseball team, that was state championship team. And, and Joe Merton. So, I almost forgot Joey's been an employee in the district for, I think, 30 years. So, we're excited about that. We're getting it out, uh, to the Mail Tribune. We got it up to the Rogue, Upper Rogue Independent. Everybody is invited to the social pregame social. It's gonna start at 5:30 in our cafeteria where we will, um, introduce all of them and, uh, have some nice things to say about them, um, prior to the game. At halftime, we'll recognize all of them and, uh, move on. So, we have, we're in the process of making plaques and getting all that entered. We'll have a, we'll have our online Hall of Fame, uh, updated. So, this is a good thing. We're gonna try to do 10, 10 members per year to get caught up because we're so far behind. Um, like I said, we're going back to 1947, so...
Casey, what's the date for that?
October 22nd at 5:30 PM. And then at halftime, they'll re-recognize at the halftime football game.
Okay. I just shared a calendar, getting back with the school board.
Thank you.
What are you worried about these days?
What am I worried about? Uh, transportation. We've done some things. Uh, district office has really helped out in, in, uh, problem solving with us. You just mentioned that Mason drove the minibus yesterday. So, uh, we have a new policy where if their transportation is not available, um, due to lack of, of bus drivers, then, uh, people that are certified with minibus can be compensated. So, we're compensating. We've set up a, a system of logging those hours and, and, uh, sending them into payroll. So, we're getting people paid for, for driving. And that includes coaches. So, if coaches are forced to drive a minibus because there isn't transportation available, then we're getting those. We also have waivers, uh, that we are using from, uh, from, I think it's Lane School District. Basically, a copy of, of what they're doing so students can transport themselves if they're, or parents can transport them or whoever the parent designates as a, as a transportation, um, anywhere south of Grants Pass. So, to Grants Pass and south. In order to get our athletes and activities people to where they need to be. So, that's, uh, really alleviated some of our, our big issues there. Now that the smoke is gone, there's, there's not as much, uh, rescheduling and stuff. We are, we are, uh, short on officials in every sport, which is causing a lot of schedule changes. Um, right now, we still don't have basketball, a solution for basketball because, uh, typically basketball happens on Tuesdays and Fridays. Some divisions are gonna have to change and we might have to go Wednesdays, Thursdays for basketball games depending on which division is going where. So, because we have 4A teen programs in the, in the Valley and 5A programs and 6A, so they're gonna have to, to, uh... So, there's gonna be a lot of schedule shifting. And this is happening throughout the state, not just, not just, uh, in our area.
How about quarantines?
Quarantines have been, uh, we, I just shut down our, our cheer program because we, we had, um, some COVID and a couple of COVID cases. And, and, uh, they're in a close area. So, just out of precaution, we, we, uh, we have, uh, quarantined the program. Other than that, the other sports, we haven't had issues. It's all been contact tracing. If any athlete is, uh, out of a sport, it's because of contact, not because of an active COVID case. So, yesterday was a busy day at the high school. I don't know where everything has fallen, but it, it was all associated with, with, uh, with the cheer program. I don't want to throw them under the bus, but then those were also students too. So, we had to contact trace within the, within the school, so...
So, with that though, were they masked?
Well, cheerleaders weren't, but, um, getting students to wear a mask properly. So, it's not just masks, it's wearing a mask properly. And, and when we go talk to a teacher, one of the, one of the issues was the student that, that, uh, that was a positive, didn't wear their mask correctly. So, that means everybody in their area is quarantined. That's the way the policy goes.
Is that true even if, uh, if an individual has a mask on that's not, like if you came up positive and I have my mask? Is that how that works?
Yeah. So, if I had my mask off and I was positive, even if you're wearing your mask correctly, you're quarantined, so...
Okay.
This has been, this has been addressed with the students and, and, and explained. But we still have those students that don't wear their masks correctly, so...
Okay.
And, and I believe that's happening everywhere. We're not unique.
Yeah.
So, it's just an unfortunate consequence of that, so... Uh, football's two and three overall, two and two in league. We have a game against Crater, um, Friday night. And, uh, we, we have, we've lost to a team that's a four A powerhouse. We've lost to the number one and number two teams in our league. And we've been very competitive in football. I'm excited for Friday night's game. Come out and watch. Boys soccer just beat Ashland last night, three to one, first time in six or seven years that we've beaten Ashland. So, that was a big win. Our boys soccer is three and one in league. Girls soccer is two, two and one in league. Um, getting wins this year. We've just, we've seen nothing but improvement in the, in the girls program. You know, they were a couple of years without having a win and now we're battling in league. And, uh, they, they have a big game tonight, um, at the high school. Volleyball's struggling. We won three sets, which is two more than we won last year, but still, still need to bring that up. Cross country, kids are competing. They're still competing at the JV level instead of the varsity level. Uh, we do have a few runners on the team that are doing, uh, running sub 20 minute, uh, 20 minutes, which would place them in some of the events that they're in, that place them, uh, top, middle of the pack, uh, in the varsity level. But they're placing first or second in the JV level, so... Um, and those numbers are up. We have five boys and, and four girls on the program, so, are in the program. So, that's good. I already talked about transportation and the things that we've done, um, with the waivers and the protocols creating those. And same with the bus and, and those protocols, so... That's about everything. We're starting to get into, um, prepping for winter season and getting scheduling done for that. Some preseason stuff going on with those programs. I think that's about it. Any questions? There's a lot going on in athletics. If you have any questions, I, I probably haven't covered everything.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. That was a great report. Uh, is the game home or away this Friday?
It's home.
Home, okay. At what time?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, okay. And it's gonna be like hot and sunny, right?
Can't guarantee that.
I'm gonna order up that weather.
Perfect football weather.
That's right. It will be perfect football weather.
I can guarantee you that it won't be sunny.
And then a statement in the Office of Teaching and Learning with Mrs. Lewis.
Okay, so, um, thank you. Um, last time we had a meeting, you asked some questions about special education, so we're gonna address them today. Um, you asked about how many teachers we have. And I just wanna report, we have 22 special education teachers. We have six, um, speech and language therapists. And we have, um, two psychologists. We have an occupational therapist. And we also have a certified occupational therapist assistant. And so, um, I've built a little PowerPoint here. Thank you for helping me out, um, Stacy. Uh, this is the names of all of our programs. Um, speech and language, resource, which is the typical, um, you know, just to get, the student needs a little bit of assistance. Um, sometimes this is called the ERC in schools, but it's the resource room. Then we have MAPS, PALS, pathways, our MVP, VIP, Steps Plus, PDHH, and Washington School for the Blind. Um, and all of those acronyms, uh, we have a slide for each one, so we'll talk about it as we get to them. Are we ready, Stace? Thank you. These are our speech and language therapists and these are their caseloads. Now, um, it looks like Margaret Gubica is a bit overloaded here. And, um, so we're, we're doing some shifting with that, but I wanted you to have, you know, write fast exactly what's going on right now. And these are, um, students that they serve. They may not necessarily be the case manager for it. Um, several of our students in MAPS and PALS receive speech and language therapist, therapy, and these would be the therapists working with them. Thank you. And the next level is resource. Uh, these are students with high incident disabilities. Uh, this is our largest program in all of our schools. Um, I'm not gonna read those things to you. I'll give you a couple of seconds to read that. Typically, um, students in resource, um, might work with a resource teacher, um, 30 minutes a day, one period a day at the secondary. It's not generally too much more than that. Next slide. Thank you. These are the names of our resource teachers and the student numbers, they're their case numbers. Um, at Table Rock, we have traditionally had two resource teachers. Um, Dean Murdock is there right now, um, carrying the water with, uh, 47 or 48. Um, we are, um, trying to hire an additional person there. You can see we do have two virtual teachers, um, and we contract for them. They, um, we work with, uh, an outfit called Blazer Works that finds some employees for us. Uh, but they're virtual. It's not our first choice, but it is, it is what it is. And, um, also to help mitigate what's happening at Trey, we're adding additional instructional assistants as well, so...
So, those virtual positions are new to our district. We did, we traditionally haven't done that. It's because of the, of our difficulty in finding bodies to, to fill these roles. And it's expensive.
Great, thank you. Um, the next program is MAPS, which stands for Multi-Age Positive Support. And our MAPS students, um, if you think of it as like a continuum, they would be, um, below the resource group. And this group typically, um, has some low cognitive abilities. Um, and in those classrooms, they're focusing on the list of things there. This is just a small list of all of the things that they're doing. And we have, um, a pretty robust program with MAPS. Let's go and go to the next slide. Thank you. Um, we have two MAPS 1 programs. We have, um, then we have a MAPS 2 program, a MAPS 3 program. And then, of course, um, if the students are not, don't work themselves out of MAPS, then they might go to the high school and middle school MAPS program. And those are the caseloads or the number of students in each of those classes. They are self-contained classes, just like it... They are self-contained classes, just like at an elementary school where you have a second grade class. There's, at Hillside, there's a MAPS One class. Mrs. Peter Patterson is the teacher, and she has thirteen students in there, and she also has instructional assistants supporting her as well. Some of the students may need diapering, that sort of thing, and all of these teachers and their assistants are prepared to do that.
And these students stay in these classes all day?
Yes. We do try to get them out when it's appropriate with their peers. They do lunch often when we don't have COVID. Right now, with the six feet apart and all that, it's always challenging. Also, we encourage them to join things that they can, like PE. We're getting some music teachers now, so they might be joining that. Might go down for story time, you know, whatever the student is able to do. Our goal is to get them with their peers. Then the next group is called PALS, which is Practical Academic Life Skills. And our PALS students are probably our most impacted students with special education. They have very low function, very low adaptive skills and cognitively. Many times they are nonverbal. They don't have a, they can't, they can talk, but they don't talk for a variety of reasons. And we have two programs with that. You can go ahead and go, Stacy. And I sent this to you too, so if you want to look at it at your leisure, in the interest of time, I'm trying to read a little faster. We have two teachers. The first one is Holly Brandt, and she works at Eagle Rock, and she has nine students that are K through five. And then Karen Ewen works at Eagle Point High School, and she has seven students, and they are sixth through twelfth grade, so.
Are these also self-contained?
Yes, these are also self-contained. And these students, I would say, probably have less opportunity to be out. They go in, they do try to eat with their peers and stuff, but they, they are impacted with their disability in such a great way that it just doesn't always make sense, okay? Then the next one is Medically Valuable Persons, our MVP program, and these are students who are medically fragile. It might also be a student who has a feeding tube or who has a catheter. And this program is housed at White Mountain Middle School. Thank you. And the teacher there is Rebecca Weiss, and she has seven students there. And this group is pretty impacted also, especially with COVID. Because they're medically fragile, their parents are hesitant to let them come to school where they might catch the virus that would be physically devastating for them. So, and Rebecca has helped out a lot with our virtual teacher there at White Mountain also. Then next we have is our Pathways Behavioral Program, and these are students that have severe behavior issues that impact their learning. Typically, they have trouble with self-regulation. They might get upset and, you know, flip a desk over, that sort of thing. And so we have two programs for that. You can go ahead and go, thank you. The first one is the K Five Pathways, and that's located at Table Rock. We have nine students in that program right now. And then we have six twelve pathways with Lacy Williams. And Lacy starts at Eagle Point Middle School, does her morning there, and then she goes the afternoon to work with the high school. We are looking at that a little bit because those numbers are seeming to creep up. Eagle Point is a great place to live, and we've had a lot of families move in that have IEPs that say that this is the placement for their students, so. We're taking a look at that. We're doing some different kinds of designs to, to make that work, to help our kids be successful. And our hope is that our K Five program students will become regulated enough by themselves and stuff that they won't have to go into the middle school and high school program. John used to be the middle school teacher, and last year the numbers in middle school were quite low, but you just never know. Every year is different.
But those students are not isolated, they, they're up?
As much as possible, yes. They do have like a home base and a home teacher, and they do have some instruction in that classroom, typically social skills, and if they are lower in math, they might have math in there also. It's also on a levels system, and so if they are really struggling with their behavior, then they're not going to be out with the, with their peers. And they, they work, it's like a level system, they work their way up.
So for that, that's for the Pathways program?
Yes.
Does the Pathways program cover the entire district?
Yes, K Five, yes. K Five is in one program, and then the six twelve is in another, yes. And so we bus these students. It's also true with MAPS, the MAPS programs and the PALS. Wherever it is that they live, we bus them to those programs.
And what's the requirement, or what's the process?
It's, well, we are a district that believes in multi-tiered systems of support, and so if a student has a struggle, we do some interventions first, because these programs are very restrictive, and the law really wants us to have students in the least restrictive environment. And so we are, the school's working on interventions. Often our psychologists will go in and work with the school, work with the teacher, work with the student. We try some interventions. If that doesn't work, we change the intervention up, and we go through a process of at least three interventions to see if we can support the student. And then the next program is our Vocational Independence Program, and this is for our students that are eighteen to twenty-one. Special education law requires that we serve students till they're twenty-one years old. And so these students typically have already finished at Eagle Point High School with a modified diploma, extended diploma, or a certificate, a certificate of attendance. And this is housed over at the building that is currently called Urseo at the Outback, and the district actually built an apartment in there, so they're teaching the kids how to make beds, how to do dishes, how to prepare small meals, that sort of thing, because we really are helping them get independent skills so that they'll be able to hopefully at some point live on their own. They also learn to ride our bus, our VT bus system and all of that, so. And they are, they're ours until they're twenty-one, and once they get to be this age, they're typically, it's their decision, not their parents'. All right? We also contract for out-of-the-district programs. Medford or the Southern Oregon USD rather offers a program called Steps Plus that is in Medford, and it's for our students that have high cognitive and behavioral needs, higher behavioral needs than we can take care of. I've observed in that program, there's like nine instructional assistants in there with the teacher, because the students are having so much trouble with self-regulation that they need to have that sort of support in there. We have a few students there. Also, our students in the area that have, that are deaf or are hard of hearing go to, if they are elementary students, they go to May Richardson in Central Point, and that's a regional program. And if they're in middle school, they go to CENIC, if they're in high school, they go to Crater. We currently have one student there. And then we have one student that is blind, who is very recently attending the Washington School for the Blind. That's in Vancouver, Washington. Oregon used to have a school for the blind, but it closed, and so the IEP team working with the family got together and made the decision that this was the best placement for this student. And so the student, we, has, is transported to Riddle, where there's two students in that area that we join on a bus, and they go up to Vancouver. It's a residential place, so the student goes up there on Sunday evenings and stays till Friday. They dismiss at noon on Friday, and then they come home. And the school just has students that are blind in it, and the teachers are totally prepared to help. And this is something that is not, is probably not a lifetime, well, the student's going to be blind for their lifetime, of course, but this school experience is probably not necessarily going to be every year, because each student is unique, the team has to get together and make decisions, so. And that's it, I think. Any questions?
Sure. What kind of, is there any additional training for the IAs when it comes to working with any of these children?
Yes, the instructional assistants, that we have different categories, and special education instructional assistants are actually paid a little bit more because they do receive more specialized training. They annually receive CPI, which stands for, cut me out.
It's a non-binary.
Thank you. And also, we're setting up some training every first Wednesday of the month just for the instructional assistants with regional support from our Southern Oregon ESD, so. And of course, their teachers are also training them all the time, so.
And when it comes to the intervention strategies, is there a level that is beyond intervention where anyone can consider the threat at some point, where you don't go through all the steps of intervention, or is it mandatory to go through all of them?
Well, you, you can't just give an IEP to a kid. You can't, you can't just say this kid has an IEP. You just, by law, you can't do that. And so there's a process to get to that point, and if it were a serious threat, like if someone brought a knife to school or something like that, then we would probably go down the discipline road first, because we would need to find out what is causing that, why would, why would the student do that? So, it's, it's actually pretty complex. Anything else?
I had two brothers in the VIP program. It was great, so.
Thank you, thank you for that, yeah.
That's really cool, they put an apartment in Urseo, that's, that's neat, that's new.
No.
Is that new?
Yeah, it's been a long time, actually.
That's cool, neat to see.
People pitch in, work in, and then we'll have larger classroom space.
Oh, great, yeah, cool.
And they take several field trips to grocery store, you know, things like that, so that they can come and get it.
A lot of job training.
And they said that they got jobs, my brother's got jobs at Ray's and one at the pizza place. It, it was fantastic while they were in the VIP program, and then they were on their own, and then foster care program did not help them maintain that, and that was disappointing, so, yeah.
Lots of, lots of systems.
But the VIP program was awesome.
Cool. And then are we still trying to hire for the virtual, the virtual teachers? We're still trying to hire for that?
Yes.
Even though, okay.
Yes, we, we always have that. We always have, yeah.
It open?
Yeah, it's always open.
To hire, okay.
And, and that's not new.
Right, no, I know.
That's across the country, and that's in Southern Oregon too. Everyone's in the same position with hiring.
Do you have any comments?
No, no. Well, last year, how many virtual teachers did we have?
In special education?
Mm-hmm.
Probably just our speech and language therapists.
Okay, so have we hired more though this year?
Yes.
That we've taken off, okay.
Yes.
So that's a real positive step.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
What are your biggest concerns with special education right now?
Just, you know, just making sure that we have bodies there every day, because families are saying that they're very best. Our staff is amazing, just absolutely amazing. Every day they come ready to serve kids and, you know, just have a positive attitude and just ready for anything, so it's, it's really encouraging, just a very strong group of professionals.
How are we doing for our substitute, our subs? You know, our IE subs typically get all these moms and dads in our region and our cities that are willing to sub, you know, with the full vaccine thing. How are we doing with subs? Because I know, you know, these classes are, have a high need of subs, so how are we doing with that?
Yeah, our district has always struggled with getting enough classified subs, and so last year we began the premier classified sub program through edgy staffs, and they actually get paid a higher rate, but they have to commit to our district specifically. They have to maintain eighty percent attendance, so they're not in one position for a long term. It's their kind of the one, two days, they'll go in. So we, we've increased that number from last year, but still, you see the edgy staff signs up, we need more than classified ranks, that's where we're at the most.
And Emily, if I could add, I think prior to COVID, we were in better shape.
Yeah.
Because there's so many moms that come and help in this elementary, and they were like, hey, you're really good at this, why don't you come join us and be an IA? And when we were unable to have volunteers in our schools, then it's hard to sort of cultivate that relationship.
Right.
And find those gems, so.
Well, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, that was a great report. Supervisor's report, Dean.
Hey, good morning. How's everyone doing? I'm here talking about wellness on Wednesday, so I guess it's a wellness Wednesday. We rolled out a new program for all of our Eagle Point School district staff just over a week ago. It consists of a monthly newsletter, so each month there is a new focus, but it's not just a newsletter, it's an interactive newsletter. So there's like, for example, the one that we just released was on muscle tension. A lot of it has to do with like clinching of our jaws, like we're all in our mask, how many people like push their jaw forward while they're in their mask? And that added tension adds to headaches, which adds to your ability, and it just kind of, it goes up from there. Also, when we're feeling tight, we're not really able to perform as well as we normally do. So this was a big focus. There was links to different videos that took you onto YouTube so you could watch how to do things. We gave everybody who signed up for the program a lacrosse ball to teach myofascial release that you can do right in your office chair, because, you know, these teachers and staff are really short, so booking an hour out of your day to go get a massage is really quite a challenge, so it's a way to introduce self-education. The other element is there was photos that came along with it that were very instructional. So the good news is it's been out for a week, actually, it's all good news, but it's been out for a week, and we have over a hundred employees signed up already. So the other thing that was super incredible is all the schools put it in their newsletter, so just how excited they were for the program. The newsletter itself, sorry, Andy, trying to put you in a spot here, but, so Andy's newsletter has been out for a month, and it received about six hundred and eighty visits. The Wellness Newsletter has been out for a little over a week, and it's received twelve hundred and fifty-eight visits. So, I got more hits than you guys.
You have to put something about massages in there.
Easy, I'm just going to make the Wellness Letter my letter.
Switch the names on it. And so, the big, the big, I guess, picture there is how much it's needed, how much staff are appreciating it, how much they enjoy it. We also have an incentive program that went out with it. It's through a Google form, and it's on the honor system, and it's an overview of the last month. So it asks like, I felt like I got to take a mental break during the day, and then one hundred percent of the time, seventy-five percent of the time, fifty, twenty-five, or not at all. So it also gives us a nice overview of what our staff are actually doing. And one thing I was really shocked, and what we've seen so far, is sixty-four percent of our staff felt like they were able to get a mental break during the day, even if it was for a few minutes, less than fifty percent of the time. And so this next article that's coming out, it'll be released this third Friday of each month, really focuses on job burnout, really preventing job burnout, but it has a lot to do with self-accountability and things that you can actually put on your plate, things that you can take off our plate, because as educators, we all feel that we have to do everything, and right now, that's just not possible. So there's a little bit of that like guilt feeling that comes along with, I'm not doing my job as good as I can, and recognizing that that's just going to be there right now. So it even has a little image that you can click on. It's a video that takes you right to YouTube, and it's like a beach setting, and it's overlooking the ocean, and so, because a lot of studies show that just being able to click and go mentally somewhere else, even if it's for two minutes, can reset your focus and really improve the amount of endorphins and stimulus that you get to your brain. The other thing that we're really spotlighting with that article is laughter, because laughter really does reduce stress, no joke, it really does. And so we're introducing these different concepts about laughter and just ways for people to become more aware. So each month, there's going to be a different focus. Our first one was on muscle tension, our second one is on the mental side of it, and then the other part of the piece, if I haven't talked long enough already.
Get to the end.
So the last section is there's an incentive program. So this form that they fill out, they earn points, those points turn into money that they can utilize to purchase wellness items. So we buy you items for them, it's not direct money, but let's say that you want to do pair of running shoes as part of your wellness goal, you can earn points each month, and then the district buys you those shoes, so. So it's, it's been pretty well received so far, really looking forward to seeing how it develops over the next month. We're also going to introduce some fun games too, like with Halloween, there's going to be some themes, from Christmas, there's going to be some themes too, so. Yes, all right, got it, your ass.
Yeah, great.
Are there any questions?
On the survey, is it just from the people that sign up, or is it, is that to everybody when you?
It's ju, it's, so it's just for the people who sign up. However, if you don't sign up and you hand in the survey, I automatically sign you up for the program. So, so even if you forget to sign up for the program, if you hand in the form, you are participating, you will get those points, so.
So just a couple of things I want to highlight for the board is, the first thing is, our staff is strained right now. We don't have enough people, and those people that we do have are working much harder than they ever have. We don't have enough people and those people that we do have are working much harder than they ever have been before. So we, we see this as a way to try to reach out and, and work with them, to try to help them in doing their jobs during the time when we need them. Second thing is it also fits in with our long-term priorities. We, we have priorities in there about culture, about communication, about morale with our staff. We think that this is a fabulous program and that it's only going to get bigger and more useful for us long-term. So it's, it looks like the win-win for us at this point. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then Mr. Oliva. Did I say it right?
Oliva?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna have a seat though. Hi, my name is John Oliva. We, I'm gonna talk a little bit about wellness as part of the SEL program, which I was asked to speak on a little bit today. And, and what we're noticing, principal over at the Eagle Point Middle School, he talked about suicides. And we're talking about staff wellness. It's really a lot of moving parts of keeping our staff in a position where they feel appreciated and continue with some type of motivation. And it is challenging, you know, listening to Oregon Department of Ed meeting the other day. One of the greatest fears that they have for the upcoming year, the twenty-two, twenty-three year, is a lack of teachers. Okay, because they're, they're burnt out. There's, there's this significant lack of support that they're feeling within their communities and which, even within the profession. So we've, as Andy stated, we're making this a priority. And, and, and having someone like Dean has the experience and working with adults and giving them connected to wellness. Not only just a physical exercise, mental, and as well as nutrition. So Dean has it under control and it's, it's fun to work with him. The piece that I wanted to talk to you a little bit about today is the, the SEL programs that are existing in our schools today. We have the Character Strong company working closely with them. The elementary schools have notoriously been well-supported in the area of social-emotional learning. Outgetting along, making friends. But the big challenge is our middle and high schools. And I'm gonna hand this out to the board here, is the scope and sequence of the Character Strong program. And as you see, when you look through it, it's pretty precise as it. I'm gonna bring this tip over here.
Thank you.
You bet. And as you look through it, the middle and high school looks at more of the, the, how, how you get along with others. And how can you respect yourself? And then the decision-making process. So we're really focusing on that. Now, here's, here's a piece that COVID has really, I, I rob our kids of. Is that, that social connectedness that we all know is, in order to develop healthy students in our community, we really have to initiate more of those human connections. We know online learning doesn't provide that. We, we do know that some kids will thrive in it, but it's a small population of child. This whole COVID thing is, it really has a significant impact in how our kids relate to each other. We know that social media has, has impacted our children's significantly in our inability to make human connections. Now, what are we gonna do about that? Well, we, we have the research. And we have, we're making it a priority. But what's next? What, what's next? And it's, it's not us standing alone as a, as a school district. We have the partnership with entities that have already have been proven, like Jackson County Mental Health, Rogue Community Health. And we have their school-based programs in our schools. So what is that? That's, that's the next priority. Today, we have a meeting this afternoon at Light Up Middle School, Threat Assessment. And we're making suicide prevention a priority. And I've got a meeting with Terry Kiesling and Ryan at Heart CH, Arlong, as well as Jackson County Mental Health. Because we need a partnership, get these partnerships closer together where we clearly identify what roles and responsibilities we have to each other in our community. Because kids, we know, don't have suicidal thoughts between eight and three. What's gonna happen beyond the, the scope of five to midnight, one o'clock at two? Who do they call? And what is the procedures? We're working on those procedures and, and together, what we'll be have is a wraparound program that, that all these systems will be worked, work, and work well together. We're in the process. If you were asking me right now, what would be the process? We do have one. But making myself more knowledgeable as we go along, as we introduce different roles and responsibilities. As you've heard, there's been a lot of turnover and a lot of new folks. And getting people on board and trained in, in, in specific areas. And you were asking about special ed and training for the behavior kids. This is all connected. It's getting people trained and knowing exactly and being able to, to have a program that sustains itself. The last bit here is that these, overall, the, the, the support for character strong and purposeful people is, is good. People are beginning to introduce it. I work closely with the instructional coaches because they're, they're helping their teachers and abilities implement the program throughout. Principals are including the character strong, purposeful people in their newsletters. So when you receive a newsletter from a school, please scroll down to see if you can see what the theme, I think TRE, is responsibility for their month. And trying to work with Jenny and some of the monies that are available to recognize these schools that are, that are finding success in their postures. So yes, there's a lot of targeted social-emotional learning that goes on in the middle at the elementary. But there's big pieces that need to really be developed in the middle and high school. So we don't have a principal concerned about suicide threats in our school. And we have a system that just works flawlessly. Are we there yet? Absolutely not. We're getting there. And with the support, with the, with the school district and the board, I'll have more to report next time about our partnerships, what they look like and, and how and what. Any questions at this moment?
I know that you said that it's targeted at the elementary level. But I'm curious, with there being such a discrepancy between the middle school and the high school and the elementary, is something need to start happening even more in the elementary that would carry? I mean, I would think that if we're working at the elementary level, that it would, it would continue to the middle school and part. I understand that there are the changes.
Yes.
So I'm just curious if there's something more that actually should be happening even prior to middle school.
Oh, absolutely. And there is. Purposeful people is the program. And that's a great point you make. You know, how, when, when, when you develop, when you introduce a new program that is implemented in the, the elementary, middle and high schools, there's gonna be a baseline, a starting point. And this is where we are right now. So yes, we are targeting purposeful people and it has a very similar scope and sequence as the middle and high school. And, and the SEL programs that were, that were, that I'm talking about, there's just one. The, the schools themselves have the freedom to develop in addition to, if they want to have a program of students, a club that focused around responsibility, a responsibility group, for example. Schools have the freedom to do that. Character, character strong and purposeful people is just one of the many programs schools have access to, to develop an overall SEL program for their students. So when I, when I talk about this program, it, it's not the, the, the alpha and the omega there. It's not, yeah, it's just one of the many pieces that they should be implementing.
And how long is that program in place?
This is, this is the first year.
This is the first year.
It was piloted last year from Table Rock.
Right.
And, and this is one time where we do have a K-12 approach. And I don't, I don't know if, if John mentioned it, but at the middle schools and at the high school, they have DIN. And they have NEST, which are like advisories. And so that's where the high school students get their delivery of the curriculum.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That was a wonderful update presentation. I really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, and then moving on to, oh, and just so you guys know, Mrs. Farman is not here today. And that's why Mrs. Farman's presented on this bed stuff and I'm not just giving her on purpose. And then live stream of Dean. Robert.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me back again today. I wanted to do, take the opportunity to do a little follow-up on some questions that were asked at last month's session. And then present you with a little more information regarding this. To, to follow up with Rogue Valley Television utilizing the City of Eagle Point's council chambers. There, there would be a cost associated with that. Typically, in other municipalities such as Ashland, where the, where the city conducts their meetings in the council chambers and then the school board uses that as well, the cost is spread across the different entities. And the City of Eagle Point, because the Eagle Point, because the city isn't utilizing those, those services and they don't have a relationship with Rogue Valley Television, the cost would fall solely on us as the sole users of that system. The quote that I got, and this is, this is, this is an estimate of services to produce, process, schedule and store the information as public record on the cloud, would run the, the district approximately fifteen thousand dollars per year. Like you said, in, in, in the other, in the Ashland municipality, this cost is spread across the different entities that use it. And typically, the school board in Ashland has a very minimal contribution to that just because they're a, a not-for-profit education entity. Next slide, please. I was asked to figure out some viewer statistics for what Rogue Valley Television does. I was unable to get the Ashland School District Board viewing statistics. However, the area meetings that typically get held through RV TV, when it's a hot button issue that's, that's scheduled to be discussed, the, the station can, can receive typically between two hundred and three hundred views consistently throughout the stream. Of course, that'll spike during the actual discussion. And then after that, that hot topic, the viewership can drop off. And then typical meeting viewership can range between twenty and fifty. On top of that live viewing, you'll see the, they see the same amount of replays after the meetings have, have concluded. Next slide, please. I wanted the, there was a request made to, my board to, to see what we could do with utilizing equipment that the district already owns. Currently, we have this camera right here in the corner in addition to the iPad. It's on loan from the athletics department from the high school. Thank you, Casey. I appreciate that. This camera's equipped with a single microphone at the top there. It's a directional, so it kind of tries to capture what's in the room. But it's best suited for reaching farther out, typical of what you would see in sporting events. So you can kind of get the feel for what's happening on the field or calls that are being made on the field. We're currently streaming this directly to YouTube. It's on a different channel than what Stacy is streaming, what she typically does. However, after this meeting concludes, I'll get a link sent to the, the board so that you can review the difference and how this, how this device is performing. This particular camera is specifically outfitted for sports production. As I mentioned, the microphone on top, there are some graphics overlay options that it has. However, I wasn't able to adapt some of those from scorekeeping, which Casey typically takes advantage of, to that of a static, what's called a lower third. It just contains information about what's, what's being recorded right now. Currently, I think it, I think I put it to, it just says Eagle Point School District. And then the second line says Board Work Session for today's date. This is a high-quality camera and one can be made, one can be purchased. That has more, more features that are more closely adapted to a meeting setting just like this. But that, that range, that price range, I believe as configured, this one is, was about twenty-five hundred dollars. And for just the base camera itself, typically you'll see it in around the two thousand dollar level. One thing, this, this, one thing that this differs on, between a camera switching device, which I had mentioned to you last meeting, is this is a single static shot. It's being broadcast in high definition. But again, that single static shot, it's just capturing the room as it sits right now. Kind of similar to how I'm seeing you all at the moment. With, with a different system, we would have multiple cameras strategically placed around the room. And then an operator would be moving those cameras robotically remotely and focusing on individuals that speak at one time. Next slide, please. The, another thing that everybody had some questions on that was brought up was about the quality of the audio. Typically, what we've been doing with the iPad is just using the onboard microphone to capture the room's audio. It does, I guess it would be an adequate job. Currently, this camera, it has a bit better of a microphone, but it's not designed to capture audio that would be presented in a room with multiple participants, like what we have right now. I did quote some audio equipment that could interface with a camera just like this. For a wired setup and everybody having a microphone positioned right in front of them, plus one for an audience member and one for an spare should one fail. It's eleven positions. That would cost approximately eleven thousand dollars. The exact amount is up on the screen, eleven thousand seventy-eight dollars and forty-one cents. The, the pro, the main pro on this is it's a reliable, high-quality wired solution. Each person has a microphone, very similar to what's on top of that camera pointing directly at them. All those microphones would then be wired into something called an auto mixer. The auto mixer then turns on the microphones on the fly as people speak into them. So in the event of doing a meeting such as this at a different venue that has no audio, we would have speakers with us and those auto mixers would prevent feedback. So only the people speaking into the microphone have their microphones turn on automatically with no user intervention. That way, you don't have eleven hot mics all at once that could cause feedback situation. The con, one of the cons to this wired setup is a longer setup and take that time, obviously, to run wires to each speaking position at any venue. That would take a little bit of time, probably forty-five minutes to an hour before each meeting. And about that same amount to tear it down at the end of the meeting. Next slide, please. We were also curious about a wireless solution. This, this wireless solution, it's almost identical equipment. However, instead of a bunch of courting, there's wireless interfaces between each microphone that go to those auto mixers. This obviously increases the price to just north of twenty-four thousand dollars for the same setup with eleven positions. The pros and cons here are kind of just reversed of each other. Obviously, with wireless, the setup and tear-down time is significantly quicker because we don't have to roll out and re-rail in a bunch of wiring. The cons on this, though, are, could be significant. Wireless technology is, you know, some, I guess sometimes people call it a little better than a parlor trick. Wireless can be unreliable in some situations. If we're in a venue that has, maybe we're in close proximity to a cellular tower or a radio station or something else that does terrestrial broadcast, even though that doesn't run on the same frequency, the noise floor can raise significantly, causing more potential interference and shrinking the distance by which the, the range of the wireless microphones to the, to the receiver can, can transmit. So with, with wireless technology, it's, it's really cool and handy. But sometimes, depending on where you are, it can, it can cause some interesting side effects that are difficult to predict. That's all I have for this presentation. I'm happy to entertain any questions or further discussion from the board or anyone else.
Can we do the microphones without needing a new camera?
Yes, if we wanted to continue to, to borrow this camera from, from Casey, that microphone setup, either one of those, would interface with a camera just like that.
Okay.
Would it interface with like an iPad?
I don't think so. The iPad only has one input on it, and it's just a, it's just a headphone jack. There's a microphone connection on it, but the professional equipment use a larger connector called an XLR, and typically, that connector needs to deliver voltage to each microphone position. And the iPad, it wouldn't be capable of that.
So, Robert, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. If we took, if we were to buy the microphones with the wires? We had, we borrowed the athletics cameras during our board meetings. We set one up on a swivel out here and one in the background. Could we then stream like two screens so that somebody coming in on to watch could then see the overall picture and then would be able to see that directly that person's speaking?
Good, good question. The cam, this camera here, it's, it's meant for, you know, to be placed on a tripod and be static like it is right now, or to have an operator behind it moving it to focus on different shots. In addition to that, to show two different positions, we could, we might be able to do something where like two screens are broadcast at once. I'd have to really look into that and see how our receiving platform, YouTube or Zoom, could handle that. And then further than that, typically, when you have multiple cameras, any amount over one, you want to have a camera switching device, which is what I had presented last week, to, to let cameras be strategically placed around the room, and then an operator on that camera switching device would switch to, you know, for instance, between myself and yourself as we have our dialogue, the camera angles would switch based on the cameras around the room.
Have you ever heard of a, a device called the OWL?
I didn't know.
So, I have a much smaller conference room, well, you know, but, so it's, it's a device that sits in the middle of the room. I think it's got, I was just looking it up, it's an eighteen-foot perimeter. So we used it when I had my office in Eugene. We'd use it for our sales meetings. And it automatically detects who's speaking, and it picks up that microphone and it turns the camera to that person. I don't know how many people it's limited to, but we were really happy with the way you could hear, you could see who it was that was talking real clear. It might just be another option to look at.
Okay, oh, let me, let me read that now.
The investment for us wasn't that bad, and so...
OWL, O-W-L?
O-W-L, yep. I think is that, so, the eleven thousand for the wired setup is still a chunk of change, and then you got the cost of setting it up every time. So, you know, like I said, just, I thought about that when you were on, like, wait, we have that, and so...
That, that, I'll definitely research that. I haven't, I haven't heard of that product.
But again, I don't know, sure to say how many people, how many, how many microphones it will pick up, you know, it...
You bet. I can definitely dig into that functionality. One thing about how the movement goes, I, I know that our viewership isn't super high for these meetings, and the projected viewership based on the numbers that Rogue Valley Television gave me aren't super high either, so we wouldn't have to worry about things too much about... But I still want to consider the viewers in mind. Usually, when you have a camera that rotates around, it can be a little...
It doesn't rotate.
Oh, how does...
It's automatic. It clunk, clunk, clunk. It, it just, it just swaps.
Does it have multiple cameras on it?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. Okay, let me, yeah, let me look into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of money. I do really, I, I like the idea of, though, of us being heard better. I do think that our biggest, the biggest thing I'm concerned about is just that everybody's, what everyone is saying is being heard. So I'd be really interested in the OWL thing, and, Robert, thank you.
Absolutely.
Do you guys have any thoughts on this? Like, the fifteen thousand dollars that we would respond for, that just seems like a lot of money. A one-time purchase of eleven thousand seems still like a lot of money, but I don't, I don't know.
Is that crazy?
Not totally crazy. It's a one-time thing, but then my biggest concern comes to who are we hiring to set up and take it down? Because I don't really want to put that on Stacy every time, perhaps, to make her have to stay for an extra forty-five minutes to an hour after and to be there that much earlier. So, there's just a lot of factors that go into that. So...
Well, my personal thought is, is let's look at this and see how well this worked. I mean, if, if we can hear well with this, problem solved. Problem solved.
Yeah.
Absolutely, and as soon as we're done with this, I'll, I'll give you all a link to where you can, where you can view it.
And is that the, I was just gonna say, is that the only camera that the...
I believe the athletics department purchased two of them.
We have two.
Two of them.
So, if for some reason there was a conflict, you still have access to, or do you...
Yes, we still have a camera.
Okay.
Can you extend that mic? Do they make a cable that you can extend the microphone out from the camera?
Yeah, it's just a, it'd be an XLR patch cable, but if that, like I mentioned before, that particular microphone, it's called a shotgun microphone. It's, it's, it's patterned for reception while you can hear stuff that, that transmit and the speak around it, that generate noise around it. Its, its particular design is, is very conical. So, it's really, it's pointed to about that corner of the room, so anything around it is not going to be as good as the sound that's generated from that corner of the room. We, we could explore various other microphone arrays, and that's kind of what that, that system that I put together for the eleven-thousand-ish. It's, it's an array, but it's really one of those microphones in front of each speaking position. Something, something else that could be researched is something that could, I'm really shooting from the hip here, so forgive me. If we could find some kind of a single wire array, microphone array that was designed to be placed into the center of a room, that, that could be a possibility, so that it's not, it has a different reception profile than that microphone. But again, I have to see what's going on, what the desires of the board are, and how far we want to take this.
That would be interesting, too, because that would be a lot less setup time.
Sure.
Josh, do you have any thoughts there? Okay, then, thank you, Robert. Really appreciate it. And we will wait to see what the video looks like, and then we'll hear about the OWL camera system, and then we'll go on from there.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. And then, presentation of district properties, Mr. Whitman.
All right. So we asked, was asking the last time to put together a list of all of the district properties. I have it in your packet, and then, let me get it up on the screen here in a second. It's a, just a two-page document. The first page, if you pull it up on your screen, or... I just have all the school buildings listed, and that, those are maybe what you weren't interested in, and then you know where they are, and, but I added some detail here, when the schools were built. Just kind of telling, you have a lot of newer buildings, you do have some older buildings. There's a column there that, where there were significant additions to the buildings and where there are improvements. Total square footage of the buildings, number of classrooms, and the approximate lot size of the property that that school building's set on. The interesting part, I think, is on page two of the document. We'll wait until our thing is formed up there, go through it. Okay, so the first page again are the school buildings. The second page includes our support buildings, so we start with the Student Services Building on Avenue G in White City. And that's where it used to be the Boys and Girls Club, now it's our Student Services where Phil or Tegan and his group are. This recomp is here, of course, a transportation bus barn up on Highway sixty-two. Maintenance building across from Hillside Elementary Warehouse. We have about five acres up on the hill there behind the church. That's an old warehouse facility that we do a lot of our storage, maintenance-type storage in.
Like down the road, where, where is that?
See, it goes up.
Yeah.
There's Idlewood Road, which kind of goes right in front of the church there on the hill.
Uh-huh.
And along your way back to there, there's a, there's an old warehouse coming back there.
If you go down from your house, and turn where the mailboxes are, you can see the warehouse.
Yeah.
The property is, it's five acres, and it busts right up against the, of course, that development.
Oh, interesting.
And then the other part is, you know, of course, the little wood schools, schools vacant, the, the Anniston Building and the June East, and the Technology Building, which is at the old Ursula Building on Flat Street. The other part, I think, that comes up for discussion is on the very bottom there, the bare land of the district house. And I'll, I'll point out, I have some images from Jackson County, and I'll, I'll pass these out. I just made one copy of the whole thing, kind of to show you where these properties are, but... So, there's about twelve acres on Barton Road in Eagle Point. That's the big open space between Eagle Point Middle School and Eagle Rock Elementary. Half of that lap, the twelve acres or so, is, is the football field and the track facility for the, for the middle school. The other half is kind of a vacant piece there. Actually, it goes across Barton Road a little bit. Second large item there is Avenue H in White City, twenty-two acres. And if you were to go from Crater Lake Highway and, and go on Avenue H heading out towards Whitemont Middle School, it's the big open field on, on the left-hand side. Kind of parallels the, the road there. So there's twenty acres, twenty-two acres or so there, that the district owns. That's the piece of property that when Whitemont Middle School was built, and they had to, when they built the middle school and the athletic field and, and the track, the football field and track, they were encroaching on protected vernal pools, you know, which, which we call a fairer shrimp lab, accidentally. So that was a protected species. The district came to an agreement with the Corps of Engineers to designate that Avenue H, that other twenty-two acre parcel as a mitigation land to protect that piece, to make up for the parts that were taken up by the football field and the track. So, that's kind of serving as a, an empty piece of land there, basically.
Is there any more room on that twenty-two acre parcel to be able to, for, for additional buildings?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So that's just a, take a chunk of land there. The other large parcel is in Shady Cove, and that's at the end of, oh, there, the end of Shady Cove, or, end of Schoolhouse Lane. But actually, if you go Cleveland on the middle school side of, of the property, up to the end of Cleveland, of course, where you pass the football field and the track. And on the right, there's subdivisions and housing, but if you go straight up that hill, there's a, basically a big forty-acre piece up in the district, so has owned for years. And that's vacant land. And it doesn't quite connect with the football field area because the city owns a little portion in there that have kind of holding out of irrigation on the water attachment system through there. There are also three residential-type lots in Shady Cove, and that's Mallory Lane, and that's kind of towards the end of the cheap, the Schoolhouse Lane area. Back in the fifties, from what I can tell, there were three lots that were donated to the school district. So they have just been sitting there since the fifties. There's another piece of property on Shasta and Main. If you go up to the, across the covered bridge and go to the Little Big Market there, that big gravel lot that sits there is the district's property. And that, I guess the functional piece of that was parking at one time for Little Big School. And if we ever do develop Little Big to something, the city will require that, I'm sure, and that would be an option to maintain that. And then the other piece of property is on seven eight-hundred Division in White City, and that's, I think we're going to be talking about a little bit here, that is the Cascade Pool, Pool property. And that's about an acre and a half or so. And we did have had discussions about that in previous meetings through many different levels of, or layers of ownership. Started from the Cascade Ranch years ago, developing the pool originally, going to the school district, going to the, coming back to the school district, and now operated by the Cascade Community Pool Folk. District still technically owns the land, but the pool is operated by the occupation there. And that's your, like I said, I can pass these around, I can give more to, to this, especially for the bare land that's outside the school areas, kind of an idea of where they are, what they look like. Interesting, so...
Scott, don't, did I see the community center in Shady Cove, too?
Yeah.
It's part of...
Yeah, I guess it shows up as part of our Shady Cove properties. The similar, the land under the community center up there is owned by the school district as well. Upper Road Community Center Organization operates the, the, their store and new center on that property, so...
Are they leases type of those properties, or is it just they have land used?
Upper Road Community Center is a lease, it's ten years, one bu...
One dollar again.
I don't know that there's a formal lease with the pool association.
There's an agreement to operate the pool as, as long as you're operating it.
I, I think that's on the side, but I'm not able to find the reason. Scott, can you scan these and just email them to us, too?
Sure.
So, is there any, is there any value in some of these empty lots? Are, what are we, I mean, what, forty-four acres in Shady Cove, that's a lot of land. Are we planning on, like, building a, something amazing there? Or like, why are we holding, you know?
I don't know the history behind that piece, but it's just, yeah, I guess it comes into the, is there value to it?
Right.
The residential lots in Shady Cove are probably the most useful pieces as far as building. I don't know the property values there. They're, three, three lots, total about three acres, so they're about a, about an acre piece.
Yeah.
And they're surrounded by homes, so it's, it's kind of a middle area, but there could be some value there. The other four acres up there is a large piece of land.
Is that, is that being used at all? So it's just leased?
It's all, it's kind of scrubbed out, because it's just up the hill there. It's just, and the big power, people, the power lines go through it, but it's mostly just a boat and... It's on a hill, so it's kind of a big, a long hill.
Interesting.
So with those acre, like, those vernal pools, again, I know if you want to do a development, sometimes you can allocate like they did, you know, is that forty-four acres? Is that possible for that? Probably not the same because it's not flat.
It's not flat.
Yeah.
So you're not going to have the whole pool. How those things are handled as far as the White City property, you can imagine, this owning there is kind of similar to the school zoning that's on the school property. But, you know, I'm not an expert at all in land use laws and how you can choose that as far as what you do with that land in the future. It is currently, it's, it is designated as a property, you know, by the Corps of Engineers.
You're talking about the White City property?
The White City property. I don't think there's any restrictions on the Shady Cove property.
That warehouse land in, on Idlewood, I know we're storing things there, but...
That's been the one that's been brought forward most often. Are you guys willing to bet land? Should we sell it?
Right.
Developers.
Because that seems like a pretty prime piece of property that could be developed and could be potentially fairly valuable. I mean, it's undeveloped, so you're selling undeveloped land, but it's still the potential.
That's a good potential, I'm, I'm sure.
I don't know. We, we brought this forward just to kind of know what we have, what's available, what it looks like, you know, all these things. There's really not a lot of like, I mean, we're not like having a plan right this minute, but it's just to kind of let us know what we, what's going on. So do you guys have any questions or comments? You can put this in your back pocket. You know, there's a lot of things that our district needs, and, you know, we are going to try to go out for that bond, facility planning committee, and, you know, and stuff, but like, maybe we can start leveraging some of our stuff. I really don't know. I don't know what the right thing to do is. I just think it's good for all of us to know what we've got, so... Any questions, comments, any, anything?
So, Scott, back to that, that White City property, that twenty-two acres. Essentially, from your point of view, there's nothing that can be done with that property. It needs to just sit the way it is. It needs to just sit the way it is.
That's by real high, low level, high level, that's just what I understand.
So we are not counting on it for anything. If there was another option that could be done, we're not, it's not like we're waiting to put another school there or anything along those lines.
You know, when we look back at the bond campaign we did a few, couple, three years ago, the option came in as, one of the options was to build a new elementary in White City. One of the options there initially was the piece of land between the middle school and, at that time, the, that day, that was preschool, because there's a good chunk of that available there. As it turned out, the county at that time was offered their park.
Right.
Behind the library system, the 20 acres there, if we were to get the bond approved, they would donate that land to us to locate the elementary on that site. And that's off the table now. Yeah.
Well...
Because the, the county committed that for that bond election process. And I think that's, that might be part of the next presentation, that's, you know, that's a, that would be a big part of, I think, the White City Community Association going for parks and rep district. That's part of their long, long-range plan for White City, is that would be a great spot for a public park area to, so.
Yeah, it would be.
Which is a lot of the White City, for sure.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, there's another piece, aspect to this too, is over the next couple of decades, we'll probably need to build new schools someplace, either White City or Shady Cove, or even Eagle Point, and Eagle Point's going pretty well. We don't have any property suitable really for that. I think there's some can.
What about the property between the middle school and the, and Eagle Rock? You know, there's a lot of property there, and honestly, White Mountain Middle School is not that far away from Eagle Point.
That's, that's the big issue, is, and, you know, they're identical buildings, but recently, their capacities aren't the same. Eagle Point Middle has about 100 more students than White Mountain at this time, so there's room in White City to add, add kids. To get some to your, your school zoning issues, and that's, that would be a big issue for our school board, is to, if Eagle Point grows the way it is, and our schools start getting, Eagle Point Middle starts getting, reaching its max, short of building another middle school in Eagle Point, you need to look at changing boundaries and then shifting some students to White Mountain.
I mean, but we do also have the big field in front of Ursio where the building did burn down. We do have some places where we couldn't build, we didn't necessarily build out, but we can build up, you know, so there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of options. I know Hillside was built to expand. I don't know about Eagle Rock necessarily being built to expand, but I'm assuming.
Yeah, the middle schools are able to expand too, the way they were developed.
Right.
And then, you know, the Little Butte land too, that's all five acres there, it's just sitting right there.
Right. Okay. Do you have access to the boundary layout?
The school boundaries?
Or is it just something that's out there and hold up?
I can look, but the county does maintain the, their, I forget the name, their, their M A unit, the G I S unit, they do have an overlay that has school boundaries, I think. I can look that up and get it up.
Yeah, that would be great.
Jackson County Park Tower. Yeah, it's kind of related to that, yeah.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Are there any plans for the old Hillside Elementary School? I mean, is there, is it, I know the W C A was using the gym, are they still using the gym?
Right now, no one's using the gym. We had a concern that the tiles, which had been put down where...
That's fallen out.
We had them tested, they're actually not asbestos, so we are in the process of getting them anchored and secured up there, and then we can open it up again for the, for these people to use, but, you know, one of the thoughts from the district years ago was, you know, we took out the old classroom wings at the Little Butte campus, but kept the main building and then, of course, the gym. One of the ideas was to convert, you basically have to cut the building, but keep the facade and create that as, change that to the new district office, sell this property, and then create a larger eating space over there, as well as the district offices. Do something with the gym, you know, with some money in the gym to get it more useful again.
Put in a dog park, a skate park, a pit-to-ball court, tennis court, a pool, and then we're good to go. Yeah. No problem.
Well, it is, it is a little bit of a jewel in the crown for us, that we have three, four gyms within, you know, blocks of each other. Most, most school districts don't have that advantage. Be heartbreaker to have to tear those down, because they're so expensive today.
Okay. Uh, seeing no further questions, comments, we're moving on to water rights with Eagle Point Irrigation District with Mr. Kovach.
Okay, so just again, as background, we, we had a concern that started a couple, three weeks ago with some water that was not going through a storm drain up at the top end of the Eagle Rock. That led into us, at that point, we thought, well, this is a simple fix for us, we just get rid of our water rights, the water starts, stops coming, and any potential damage would go away. Well, it's a lot, it's a bit more complicated than that. So we, looking into this, found out that our worst fears about damage, potential damage to our park lot or to the school wasn't the case, but that we still had this water coming through. The question before this, the board, is whether or not to give up water rights on, I believe it's five acres, five acres of water coming in. The pros from what I can see on that is, is that it would, it would, we would no longer have to pay an annual fee on that water. The maintenance would be reduced for us as far as the volume of water that was coming onto our property. It wouldn't be, it would not go to zero, we would still have water coming on there, but would be substantially less. Our liability would be reduced, their, water has a potential to, has of getting away above us, that we have some sort of responsibility for, it's our water. And we have a potential liability of water escaping from our catchment and the bottom of our property, which actually overlooks some suburban homes there. The, and then I think the last positive is, is that water would be able to be used productively for somebody else that would put it to work and make money for our local economy. I think the cons for us is the water would not be available in the future. We don't have any actual plans at this time for using that water, but then again, we don't have any actual plans, period, for where we're going to be in 10 years or 20 years. So, you know, I, every time as I've been looking into this, I ask, you know, where was that water intended for? What was that water intended for? And it just, it just, it comes up as nothing. But then again, you know, we live in the West, everybody in here has got some sort of agricultural background, and water rights are some, that's a serious deal. You don't want to give them up haphazardly. And then the other con is, we would still have to invest in this, in this, no matter what, whether we gave up the water rights or did not give up the water rights, we have a responsibility, and we would have a legal responsibility to maintain the ditches on our property, to maintain that water coming into our property that does come in. Randy's been working very closely with me. Randy, do you have any additional thoughts on here?
Well, a couple things. One is, it's actually six acres, but, but the, the one thing that I wanted to say is, Joni actually asked me a question that I couldn't answer, and her question was, and I went and found the answer, was, is our water rights worth anything? Like, we're Little Butte, or the Butte Creek Mill, and I said, my impression is, these water rights, you know, we just give them up. Well, the actual answer is, the Butte Creek Mill had water rights. We don't have water rights. Eagle Point Irrigation District has water rights. We are patrons of Eagle Point Irrigation. So we are not giving up a grandfathered water right, we are giving up being a patron that receives six acres from that. So therefore, there is no water right value. The other question that I was asked was, if, if we don't use these, this allocated water to us for a certain amount of time, don't we lose this? And I was under the impression that was true, and we haven't technically used this water for, since the school was built. So I asked that question as well, and basically, what they said is, that is true, we could lose it, but with nobody complaining about it, or no reason for them to go look at it, and there actually being a green strip where the water goes down through, it's never brought to intention. So technically, if they had been watching it and been paying attention to what was going on, we could have lost these on our own. The other thing that's, that's worth noting is, we do have an area down there where that water goes, it sits, it creates, you know, cattails and water grass and, and all these other issues with, which if someday we do want to develop this, or, or build something, those are going to be issues much like the fairy shrimp and that type stuff. So, but as Andy said, just getting rid of the water rights doesn't necessarily resolve the whole problem, because what's done on paper and where water decides to run is, is a couple of different issues. But this is kind of the first step in this process.
I think we should note, oh, I'm sorry.
I actually have, just out of the blue, I have a little knowledge of this, because my house is right there on the ditch, so if you're wanting to get rid of the water, the person that lives right behind me has flood irrigation water rights. So that's where all that water comes from, it just ends at the school. It used to be the Angel Ranch, and they sold to the school district that property for Eagle Rock Elementary and Angel Estates, which is the property that I live on next to it. So that used to be farmland, and the cattle drive went right through there. And so the school got it, the flood irrigation, so the water's not going to go away, because that guy still has the rights to run his flood irrigation, so it's...
So, so to answer that somewhat, you are exactly right. The water does not go away. This water comes into what they call a subdivision from the Eagle Point Irrigation District. And what a subdivision is, is it's the point of delivery that the Eagle Point Irrigation District drops the water, and in this case, I believe there's four patrons on this subdivision that split it up, and that water is at that delivery point for 24 hours. When we give up our water rights, or our, not our water rights, but our allocation of it, they are going to take six hours off that delivery point, which is going to substantially drop down the amount of water that's being wasted, because the other patrons of that subdivision will be using a less period of time.
Unless they add somebody on that subdivision?
I don't think that there's anyone there to add. There's also farther down Barton Road, where Travis Snyder's putting the development in, it was part of that. Travis actually went in and did the exclusion before they started building the subdivision, which is probably what should have happened with the school. It, it should have been excluded before it was ever built. And, and you're right, there does need to be some physical modifications to how that water comes, but that's, that's step two.
The other thing to note is that this has been a problem ever since the water coming and flooding and running down, and it's just, it's been a problem, not like a positive, it's been a problem ever since Eagle Rock's been built, to my knowledge, and that trying to let go of our water rights has been something that's been in the works and then pushed to the back burner, because it's really not a big deal until irrigation's on, and then the irrigation's off, and then we forget about it until the irrigation comes back on, you know. So I really do think this is something we should do, get the ball moving in the right direction. I guess that's my thought on it from everything that I've gathered. Do you have a comment, or do you think we should go one way or another?
So the one other thing I will add, back to kind of exactly what you're saying, the problem that's happening up there, and I have spent quite a bit of time with the ditch riders, and I work with those guys a lot, is the problem in their mind is potentially worse through the winter, because all the runoff comes down those ditches. So this definitely is not the end of all ends, it's just, it's just kind of something that, you know, some logistics that should be taken care of. So the water that's causing the problem, the water's still going to be there for 18 hours, plus in the wintertime with the runoff. Is the water going over the top of the ditch? Is that where it's coming from, or where is it coming out through leaks? The tail of their ditch goes behind an individual's house. I don't believe they're even using it much anymore by looking at how it's worked. It comes, it was apparently going over a rock wall, now it's going under the rock wall. There is a drain grate that was put into place, it's way undersized, so, so whoever built that was way undersized, it's like a 14 by 14, and it probably should be two by three feet.
Twenty-four, yeah.
And once that plugs up, it just raises up, makes a pond, goes under the asphalt, over the asphalt. And so, so there is definitely more work to be done, and I'm not convinced that we don't need to talk to that individual property owner and see if we can't work with him, some on that side. That being said, that's his personal property, and we don't have a lot to say about what happens. We have to, you know, ask nicely, I would say. But the ditch, the ditch company is not taking any responsibility to fix that. Because their point of delivery is clear up on Reese Creek Road.
Yep.
And once they send it to their point of delivery, they're done.
They're done.
So what can we do for our section? Because it sounds like we're going to have to pay for it no matter what.
The first step is, I think, to talk with the property owners and say, can we work with some of this? The next step is going to be get our, get our drain made bigger, so that we can handle this water. They designed that rock wall so that the water would flow, that was, that was an intent. There's going to need to be some planning, and it may end up costing us some money.
So if we build a bigger drain, does that negate them having to do anything on the other properties that's causing it?
I would, I would say no, because it can come off all the way down through that wall, and I, I, I don't think that's going to be the end-all fix.
And we can't just like, I'm not a farmer, we can't just like plug it?
Oh, damn!
Like, see now, whoa, it's gone! No, I mean, like, after we turn it off, like, after we like say no more.
You'll hear from me.
Because he's using that water.
I'm not using that water. I actually put 100, 100 yards of topsoil on my property, because I'm the closest to where the ditch turns, and now my three neighbors down on the side of the school are the ones that get flooded when it floods, and they still get water in their backyards. Because that ditch, he's planted a, well, the original owner planted a bunch of willow trees that are now huge, and they take up space and...
So, so let me ask you this, would you feel like the district, if it's our water, could potentially have some liability for those flooding, or are we protected that way?
No, because by the time it gets through, through our neighborhood, or where three or four houses, then it goes on to school property, so you guys just have, and I know who put the drain in and stuff, I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus, but it, it is undersized, and that causes the flooding, because that ditch has a lot of running, water running through it at times.
So by reducing the flow, it's therefore going to, it'll be a benefit in the long run, because it's going to reduce the amount for the period of time that it's going to be running, as well as fixing that drain. But to fix that drain, that drain goes to a pipe, and that pipe has to be sized accordingly as well, so then the pipe gets replaced as well, to wherever it's got to go.
Possibly. By looking down in the hole, the pipe looks like it's fairly large. I'm not sure the pipe will be replaced, the drain is definitely small, but that would have pretty good, the grate.
The grate.
The grate, and the grate gets plugged up, and then, so if we, if we can open up that grate...
Just take the grate off, and make it a big giant hole, no more plumbing trouble. No more plumbing trouble.
And then, and then when you're missing kindergarten.
I was joking, I was joking. Okay, we can't vote on this in here, right? This is a non-vote. So this gets moved to our meeting, um, and we will vote on this in the meeting.
So will there be conversations with these other property owners before then?
Um, there's cer- I, I, there certainly can. This is the first step. We have to take the first step to relinquish our water rights in order to start, in my, in my mind. Like this needs, this, the relinquishing the water rights, I think is important. What do you guys think? You're giving each other looks.
I think that that is, it is a first step. That's what needs to happen. The property owners, um, I've tried to, and I've not been able to catch the individual because I wanted to just personally talk to him and then obviously it has to go back into the, the district. But I wanted to get a feel that they were willing to work.
So we're not at any disadvantage for relinquishing our water rights when it comes to what needs to be done?
No, it's not possible.
Okay. Yeah, because this, we don't use this water to water anything. This water floods the school, it goes and floods houses, and it goes down into a pond that houses mosquitoes and frogs and all the other things, so.
Saves us a few hundred bucks a year.
And it saves us $400 a year, not to mention the maintenance that comes from trying to maintain a small drain and flooding issues and things like that.
You still, you still going to need to maintain it, whether you're enlarging it or whatever.
Oh, yeah.
Water's still going to come.
So just to, I believe the guy's name that's, he's been over my house a few times and I have communicated with him because I had solar panels and we chopped down a few of those trees.
I think, I know who his name is too. I just didn't, I didn't want to really mention it.
I love a small town school. But I believe, I, I believe he has plans for that property. That property is not.
I believe he does too, and I know his dad and, you know, he's, he's a builder too, so.
Right.
Not really a builder, but kind of developer.
So.
It sounds like to me that we just, we have to table this to our next meeting.
Right. So I'd say, I would say the process of this would probably, first step is we relinquish the rights and then we find out how much it's going to be to end up fixing the drain and all the things that we need to be fixing. And then we'll, and hear from Randy and Andy about what's going on with all that. So we'll move this into our regular meeting and, um, and go from there. Sounds good? Okay. And ladies, it was so good to thank you so very much, um, our update on the Cascade Community Pool.
Okay, well, hi, and thank you for allowing me to kind of announce, so some of you guys will have to share. I just kind of thought of it yesterday that I should probably have something more formal to at least keep me on track, if nothing else. So my name is Heather Allen and I joined the pool, uh, in early August. So I haven't been there very long, obviously. But my background is nonprofit and also HR and also training and development. So that's how I arrived there. So for you guys that don't know the history, I'll give you like a little two second quick rundown. It was operated for 22 years by the same executive director. Once it was made into a nonprofit. And as you guys were reminded, it's owned by the school district the property is. So really where we go, obviously has to have a discussion with you guys. And I know that you were kind of anticipating that I would talk more about Jackson County Parks. But really, I'd like to talk about other alternatives outside of that. So, and I'll tell you why as we kind of go through. So that's kind of the short version. And Bonnie Welber intergiciated as their board president. And has been basically the person that's been operating the pool in that two month gap before I came along after her job. So I kind of did a SWOT analysis. I thought that was the best way to tell you guys what's going well and then really where the gaps are. So our strengths are core memberships. We have people that have been swimming there for 30 years or more, so it's a lot. We have those people that come at four in the morning and have been doing 4:00 AM swim laps for years and years and years, which is crazy to me because it's where I am. Um, we have swim lessons. We have a lot of people taking advantage of that. We have some great core staff. I've got staff members that have been there six years, 11 years, very dedicated. We have a great location that serves all the surrounding communities. So we do get people from Eagle Point, Shady Cove, farther out. And it's really core, which is why the community wanted to make it a nonprofit and also why the membership really didn't want the way the VA to kind of continue it when that change happened because they really felt like in order to make it more community minded, it needed to stay within the community, which makes sense. We have great senior services, therapeutic and exercise programs. We have a longevity as a non-for, a not-for-profit, which is a good thing, obviously. And then we have long-term partnerships such as the VA and Eagle Point High School Swim Team, which I'm working on getting them back in the next couple of weeks. I'm very excited about that. But we do have some weaknesses because, you know, that's the SWOT analysis where you gotta go with the W's. So we have, uh, we have a full board, more or less. I mean, we just had someone that retired. But our board doesn't necessarily have the high-profile members that I need to really get grant funding because I need to have people that have the, the backgrounds that get funders really excited about funding a place because they know people have those strengths that are going to be good to propel the organization forward. And our board really is made up of people that are core members that just really want to see the organization thrive, but they don't necessarily want to be highly involved in moving the ball forward, so to speak. So again, Bonnie has been obviously substantial in taking things over, but that was not necessarily a role she wanted and certainly not what she signed up for as a member of the board. So, um, as you guys can imagine, if all of a sudden we, you know, you guys have to be like, can you go run a school for a while? You guys have been board members, can you just go run that while we're figuring things out? I mean, that's not really what you signed up for, right? Um, financials, financials are a key component to running a nonprofit or any organization, obviously. Our financials were a mess. So when I first arrived, I didn't understand them. They didn't make sense. I asked the board if they made sense to them and they said they did not. So we got a new bookkeeper, which is fantastic. And I've learned through that process that we're not doing great. We're a little bit above breaking even, just a little bit. So as you can imagine, that also creates some challenges in getting funding because bigger foundations and things are going to look at those numbers and say, well, this is really a good risk for us. And so I have some concerns, obviously. And then marketing and advertising, we have a Facebook page, but we're not super involved in any other social media channels, which could get us advertising and get us some younger members, hopefully, and people interested in coming to the pool. Um, lack of community awareness a little bit. The people that know who we are already are going there and swimming. And the people that don't know we are, that don't know we're there, they have no clue. So as I've been advertising for lifeguards and swim instructors, people are coming in and going, I've never been here before, I didn't even know it was here. So yeah, we have a big lack of awareness there. We haven't been good in the past of reaching out to members that have dropped off. Like what would it take to get you back? Um, our website needs updating, so we have, we have some things as an organization. So opportunities, community partnerships are being introduced to us moving forward. Um, working with maybe a Silver Slipper Program, which is a reimbursement. Uh, I'd like to get on some of the senior centers locally and get on their bus routes. Like they take their people to Fred Meyer. Maybe they could take people to the pool and we could kind of work something like that out. Uh, business discounts and trades, working with surgery centers, therapeutic centers, schools. Uh, I have a call-up this already, actually she just called me back while I was in this meeting. So I'm, I'm working towards these things, but these are going to be a really slow movie. Um, I'm also looking at sponsorship opportunities that can help us fund additional financial aid for our members. Uh, employee discount, things like that. But like I said, grant funding is going to be super challenging because the biggest things I need to be able to do that are going to be a strong board and good financials and, you know, those things that right now we just don't have and, you know, to get us ready for that. So that brings us to the fun one, the threats. So hiring, you guys have already talked about that and your struggle in the school board. I myself was a sub for a couple of years and did not renew my substitute license, I'm sorry to say. But yeah, that, things have changed. Things are pretty wonky right now. So I'm having a really hard time hiring for lifeguards, swim instructors, office. And with that challenge comes liability. So I came into an organization that I found out within literally a few hours that we were running with some serious liabilities. So we do not have a lifeguard every hour that we're open when we have open swims and when we have swim lessons. And that is horrifying and scary. And I don't feel good about the no lifeguard postings that they've had up. Because that's great if you run a small motel and you have like two people swimming at a time. But we're a pool, that's all we do. We need to have a lifeguard. So that creates huge liabilities, huge concerns. And I'm working on it, but in the middle of working on it, I sell large gaps in schedule, right? And then we have SLSA and holy concerns because I have staff members that are not getting breaks because there's not coverage. So I have staff members that are working large chunks of time by themselves, no lifeguard, no break. And that makes my HR head explode because obviously that's really scary. And we were kicked off previous insurance due to liability. So we do have liability insurance, but not because things were terrific. So as I told Bonnie about two weeks in, I said, this was not what we talked about. I was very excited and I was like, huh, there's a lot going on. And she goes, well, I didn't think you'd take it if we told you everything. She's probably right, but I like the challenge. But basically, we're at this point where who wants to run the thing? I mean, I'm running it, but long-term, there's some concerns about how long that can go on. So the YMCA did it before it became a nonprofit. They might be willing to take it back, but that's not what the membership wants. And, you know, obviously we want to try to support what the membership wants. They have a general membership meeting next week. Um, school district, even though you own the property, I don't think you guys want to take it and do anything with it or keep a pool open. I don't think that's really, you guys aren't necessarily in the business of having a pool unless we need to have a side conversation, right? And then Jackson County Parks, the board doesn't support it. I don't support it. I don't really know, membership might be a little 50/50. The person that supports it is the previous executive director. And if she wants to move forward, that's great, we're power to her, but that's not necessarily in my mind where we should go. And again, I only have two months' experience here. I'm not saying that my thoughts are the only thoughts. But I'm here to kind of express concerns about that option and I want to talk about other options. Because ultimately, the reason I'm here is I want to know what I, what I can do because it's your property. So, you know, can I go out and make contacts and try to find organizations that could possibly partner with us and help us survive or possibly take us over or something of that nature? And I don't really know kind of where the district fits in with that for our pool. So Jackson County Parks, I know district affected Jackson County Parks. I mean, they're great employees there. They have things that they do that are great.
Yeah.
But for us, and my first concern is will we survive long enough for the ballot next year? Even if that's the direction we want to go? And unless things change substantially, I don't think we will. So the good news is we have money in the bank. That's always good news, but we're not making money. And so if anything happens, any sort of capital expenses come up, any sort of major things happen, I don't know that we'll make it that far. So assuming that it doesn't, like again, I said, we're making this sliver of money. It's not much. When I get us to full staffing and we're getting breaks and we have lifeguards, we won't be making money. Right? So we're either going to be flat-ish or we're going to be losing money. So now add that to whatever could happen. I'm concerned whether we'll make it that long. So Jackson County Parks for us, they haven't been super responsive in regards to things with the park next door. And so that gives us a little, a little reason to be concerned that, you know, we are farther out. When we talk about Jackson County, we're potentially out of sight, out of mind a little bit. And that was really kind of the core thing that members have said about the YMCA as well, that they may have wanted to run it and they certainly did run it for a long period of time. But White City residents and community residents here really felt like there wasn't that connection to the community that really was important to keep it running the way members wanted to be run, which is kind of how that changed. So if that happens, obviously we have a lot of community members. We have a lot of staff, not a lot of staff, but we have 20-ish staff. We have people that would be really impacted. So, you know, we could just say, hey, this isn't working and shut it down. But that's not, that's not my intention in being here. That's not my goal, obviously. So I want to talk about what some options might be. One option that Bonnie and I talked about quite a bit is Kids Unlimited, which has moved out to White City. They have a location in the old Cascade Bingo. And their goal is to expand year over year. So right now they have K through one and they plan to expand one grade every year. So we've had a partnership with them in the past. They've brought their kids to the pool to swim. I think they would have interest in it potentially. Um, I don't know exactly what that could look like or what that would look like. But I would like kind of permission, I guess, to have a conversation. I think that's something that could be valuable. I think partnering with other parks and districts that are established. I love the idea of Central Point simply from the fact that the gap between Central Point and White City is so blurred and I don't think people really even know that, you know what I mean? That, uh, like there's some home furnishings on career lake, everybody goes, oh, is that the one in White City? Well, no, technically it's Central Point, right? So nobody really knows where that cutoff is. And so, you know, working with an established program like that, I've already had conversations with them. I've worked for them in the past. Um, they're open to whatever. Like they said, we could have partnerships where we can have movies in the park right next to you. And then it could be like a park and a swim and, you know, we just could spitball lots of ideas. But it's a non-traditional thing. It's like we're reaching out to a Parks and Rec district that's not in our town, that's not, you know what I mean? There's a lot, there's a lot of factors to that. And then basically, what other places can create sustainability? So a big, broad partnership can do that, but what does that look like? And really, we need to be looking at funding streams. So even if it's a matter of working with Central Point just enough to say, hey, do you want to write grants together? That could be really great because if we're working with an established organization that's really good at getting funding, that has a lot of backing and support, those are things that can help me move from where we are to somewhere else. I'm a little nervous about writing grants on my own just for the pool because we don't seem like a good risk, right? I wish we did, I wish it was easier, but it's not. And then again, our current state with board and financials, it just makes it a challenge. So do we think about having another not-for-profit kind of absorb us, so to speak? You know, that maybe they can, they continue to operate Cascade as a nonprofit, but it's underneath their nonprofit umbrella? That's something that could happen? Or do we get to the point of dissolving? And I don't want to really consider that as an option. But basically, like I told Bonnie two weeks in, that we can either take the money we have in the bank and ride it till the wheels fall off or we could be proactive. Because right now, the only attractive thing from a funding perspective is that we have money in the bank. And the only reason we have that money in the bank, that's the money that Cascade Bingo gave us. So, thoughts? I feel like that was such a down over presentation, but, I mean, I really want to make sure that we have a place where our members, that our staff can continue to be there. And obviously, reaching out to these organizations makes that a little tricky in terms of whether or not they would keep that current structure. And I'm operating it every day as though we're going to keep going. I'm building efficiencies, I'm building structure. I'm, I'm creating helpful good morale with the staff. I'm doing all the things that I would do as though we're going to be here 20 years in exactly the same format we are. But in the back of my mind, I'm, you know, I'm drowning water quickly, so.
Welcome to the club.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I wish all those things were better, but yeah, everybody's.
What do you want from us? Like what do you, what, what are you wanting?
I would like just kind of be, be okay, I guess, to reach out and look for some non-traditional options and then bring those things back to you if I have something. Um, I don't, I don't want to get to the point of even talking about dissolution, but at the same time, there's a point where if we get six months down the road and we may get six months down the road and nothing major happens and it's meant to kill us anyway, I don't want to come back to you guys in six months and go, yeah, we're dissolving and this is what's happening. But I need, I need time to hopefully make those connections. And I want to be able to come back to you guys in a couple of months and go, I have a solution. Here we go. So I just don't know really with you guys owning the property, if, if that's okay. Can I go reach out to Kids Unlimited? Can I go reach out to the Parks Department? Do you kind of give me at least initial authority, so to speak, of letting me have those conversations and then I can bring back for final discussion with you guys?
So how soon would you need an answer?
Well, the sooner the better. I mean, I feel like every time we cross this payroll or, you know, I, I know that those numbers are going down. So, I mean, I know you guys can't vote, so you would probably have to have that conversation next month or next time you meet, but, um, sooner is better. Um, I think that again, we are more viable now with some money in the bank. As those numbers dwindle, we. As those numbers dwindle, we become less attractive, we become, you know, less likely that somebody's going to want to take that risk. And I think that you guys know that if we shut it down, that building's going to remain empty. I don't see anybody knocking your door down to reopen the pool or knock down the pool and put up something else. I think that, you know, it's, it's very property for what it is, but we have to get somebody super motivated to move it forward.
I personally would like to see you meet with our district to see what type of partnership is, that you're looking for further. I do feel like this, this is just how I feel, you guys can, but I, Central Point has an amazing park, they prioritize it, it is a priority. However, you know, I just kind of feel like this is our, this is our building and our town that houses our kids and our families and our VA and all those things. And, you know, if we can form a partnership, I would rather, so much rather keep it in-house than to have this go strictly to Kids Unlimited or the YMCA. I am curious, you know, if you have met with the YMCA and how, what their program looks like merging with your program and keeping it kind of, because YMCA is for everyone, right? YMCA is not just meant, they're like, they want all kids from everywhere. So I'd be more interested in that type of partnership than I necessarily would with Central Point and also have you reached out to, you know, I think I would like to see it stay more Eagle Point, White City, Shady Cove, not that Medford, you know, whatever, but I'm just talking about partnershiping. You know, I'd like, I'd like to know, you know, what that looks like because we are starting our swim team and we are doing those things and I would just hate to see that opportunity once we finally got this going, you know, be lost again. And maybe even talking with Casey about finding some lifeguards on the swim team that would be interested is a great thing to have on their resume.
Yeah, we have one lifeguard that we were already employed that's on our swim team. I love that. Well, I'm totally in agreement that if there's a way to keep it in this community, in this general area, I love that. And I'm coming in, in the middle of the conversation because I only know kind of historically, I've heard that the school district doesn't necessarily want to run it or operate it or take it over. But if there's a way to partner in more broad ways to keep it open, absolutely, because my concerns are exactly what you're saying. Yeah, the Y is for everyone and that's terrific, but the bulk of, I imagine, what they would want it for, and it's also my fear with some place like Kids Unlimited, is that it would be very much focused on kids, which really changes kind of our business model. The only thing that I would say that would give us a little leverage in that conversation is that hopefully, any schools or any organization that we might partner with, hopefully, they want it during those kind of school-type hours, which is great. Those are things we could probably work around. Because right now, the bulk of our senior programming and our exercise programming is super early and then we have open swim in the evening. So we could potentially accommodate that because I don't want to just go out and get somebody to take it so we can get out from under it. That's not really where my headspace is. But ideally, we partner with someplace that really wants to keep kind of the overall business model really that we've had, because I don't want to lose members and those are going to be things that are going to lose money for anybody if it was a matter of somebody taking it over. I don't see anybody, that's huge revenue and that's regular revenue. So you don't want to kill what is working for sure. But yeah, I'm absolutely open to that. I mean, at this point, I don't have enough connections to even know how to start that conversation. Maybe you and I need to have a separate conversation, that would be great. I've talked to Anna a great deal, she's really fantastic, I'm excited to meet her in person. So, yeah, so that's where I'm at. Scott, I think you had a question.
Just to clarify, the presentation is great, just don't worry about it. From our perspective, we've talked with Joy a lot, myself in the past several years. So she no longer a part of the board?
She's not. No, she is a swim instructor at the Florida.
She retired May 31st.
Yeah. So my impression, I guess it always comes through Joy, I guess, and the push to create a separate Parks and Rec district within White City. So you wouldn't be connected to Jackson County Parks and Rec or Central Point. So it sounds like your board is not going down that road anymore or?
I think that would be great, but again, my concern is getting us to that point. I think having White City as a separate Parks and Rec potentially has some legs, but I think that, I think that it would be a long time, you know what I mean? That when you get there, even if it goes through the ballot and people say yes, then how long does it take to actually build it to where we get the support that we need to keep it running? So we would need to get to November and then kind of whatever that gap is and whatever that plan is.
November, next, November 22.
Yeah, not next month, yeah. If that were the case, I could wait it out. But, I mean, and I would like to have more conversations with Joy about what her vision is on that, because I think that definitely has some potential merit. But again, I don't think it's, I don't think it's really kind of where the board is focused either.
White City is not even an actual city.
Exactly.
So there is no public works, there is no, nothing like what Central Point, Medford or anybody else has, that's been put on the ballot several times. I lived in White City for a long time around the corner from the pool. So I know how that dynamic works. There is, there's no police department, there's no public works department, there's none of that stuff.
So it'd be unlikely for it to pass under those circumstances.
More than likely.
And it's, the district is a small district that is just surrounding the pool. And we have a lot of members that are from Medford, from Central Point, from Sands Valley, Prospect, we can't vote on it. You know, yeah, we go to the pool and love, would love to support it, but we can't vote on it and it wouldn't impact our taxes. So, yeah. It's, I don't see it passing, I really don't.
I have been in the pool, but that's why I have no idea with the layout. I mean, the bingo thing used to be a huge deal and I don't know if that just closed up because of the lease, is there room in the building to run a bingo thing again?
No.
It's just a pool.
It's just a pool. We don't have a party room or anything outside of the pool. It is a big room with a pool and changing rooms and lockers and a small office area. So we do offer parties, so I mean, that's a good, it's a good income for us and we've been starting to get more calls for that, which is great. And so, you know, there's opportunities with marketing to bring more people in for sure, but we still have a capacity of 40 people at a time in the pool, that's our max. And that's a lot. I've seen 30 in there and it is kind of a lot.
Like a swim for the kids.
Yeah, just because you can't have 40 doesn't necessarily mean you shouldn't. And again, that changes our business model that if we're going to pack the pool and looking for the income that way, then it eliminates things like lap swim in the morning and the exercise classes because those, you know, we only have five or six laps. So, you know, we can't accommodate that, so it would, it would change our membership for sure.
When are you doing open swim? I know it closed with COVID and that was hugely popular, you know, it's such, so affordable, a dollar for an hour, a dollar fifty for two. I mean, it was widely attended when we went all the time, so when are you doing open swim?
Open swim in the evening, 6:30 to 8:00 Monday, Wednesday, Friday. I always have to think about that. Or right now, we don't have staffing for Saturday open swim and that is a shame because I think Saturday was.
Yeah.
Very well attended, but we just don't have staff to cover it. So, yeah, so we have a lot of things that if I can get them, get the staffing, then we can open it up more broadly and have more open hours, which is great. But again, that's going to cost us, so it's trying to find a balance. And, you know, people, people that want those kinds of jobs want super flexibility, which is great. And, I mean, I'm glad I can support that, but I hired somebody yesterday that's just going to work 12 hours a week. And that's helpful, I mean, those 12 hours I didn't have covered, but it still leaves a lot of gap.
I don't want to sound condescending or anything, but have you thought about increasing your prices?
We have, we talked about that at the board meeting, but our membership prices are in line with Superior Athletic Club, which is, which has more offer, more offer. It's not just the pool. And so I think, I think to go down that route, I think it would be really detrimental to membership and it just, it doesn't feel like we necessarily bring more value than Superior by any means. You know, we have value because of our location and our very loyal membership, but I think that would, we would lose some people up there.
Would partnering with like Superior be beneficial? I know their thing in Medford has a pool, but I don't think they want any point does.
No. So, yeah, we're talking Superior in Medford, the one that has a pool. Sorry to make that.
Like I said, they've got the Superior and Eagle Point.
Yeah, that's interesting. I mean, they're a for-profit for sure and there would be some different, we'd have to do something different, but that's not impossible. You know, the problem is, is if we dissolve it as a nonprofit for someone else to take over and they're for-profit, that's a whole other complicated thing and they wouldn't get that money. So I don't know, they have to figure out, I don't know, we'd have to figure something out. But, but yeah, that could be worth a phone call for sure, if they're needing a pool, yeah. So I got a lot potentially to do and it may not, you know, in six months, I may be coming back to you and I don't have a solution, but I'd like to be able to seek out solutions and non-traditional solutions at that and see what we can do and obviously work with your, with your schools and look at some partnerships in that area as well.
Okay. How do you guys feel about that? I mean, I'd like them to, I'd like you to look at our district first, but I mean, how do you guys feel about looking at other districts, looking at other partnerships? I mean, where are you guys all at?
I'd like some time to do some thinking about it.
Okay.
I'd rather make that decision right away.
I think that other options is good to look at. You know, I listen to you and I look at, I'm kind of a business-minded guy and you have a huge challenge ahead of you. I don't see without an outside source of revenue besides just that. This is a sinking ship.
Yeah, ironically, we're a pool and we can't try water.
How long do you, how long do you ride the sinking ship before you say, this isn't going to work? And, you know, I, I can tell you, I had conversations because being Cascade, I wanted some history. And I was speaking with an executive from Cascade Wood Products because I thought maybe it was tied. And he said, no, it's not tied, but he said, back in the 90s, we donated a hundred thousand plus dollars for renovations and repair. I said, well, then you have an investment of this. Where do you think this needs to go? And he goes, well, he says, I don't have a good answer for that. He says, I hate to see the community lose this asset because this is a great asset for the community. But on the other hand, how long can we hold this thing up that's not viable?
I don't disagree with you and I go home almost every night and think that exact same thing. And then I come in in the morning and I see the members swimming and I talk to staff that are dedicated and then I'm like, okay. My heart really wants to make it go, my business side, because I feel like I've done nonprofit for a long time, but you have to operate a nonprofit as a business. It's still, you have to bring in money and some of my business head says the exact same thing, but two weeks in, I was like, this, this isn't going anywhere. And my hands are so tied in terms of how to create funding opportunities and funding streams because of what it is right now. So I'm right there with you and maybe that's a conversation for you guys to have when you can vote next month too, because.
And the other thing that does pop into my head as well is this is an asset of the district. And as board members, we need to think about our assets and our community and our, to be able to just say, well, we're just going to give it to you. It doesn't, we're not supporting our community like we need to be. So, so I, I'm all about if there's a solution, but boy, I'm not seeing one. So hopefully, you can come up with something and blow my socks off.
Well, and I hope I can do, but I'm concerned, I really am. And I don't, I don't necessarily want to wait until the end. You know, I don't want to get to the point where we literally are broke, you all have to go home, I don't have any money left. That's not, that's not okay, that's not acceptable. And at least if we do decide to shut it down, get to the point where we can pay our members back for the time that they've already paid for and, you know, do those things that are just the right thing to do. And we're in a position where we could do that now. But, you know, we have this one team and I want to support those kinds of things and, you know, maybe, maybe the school district takes it over just, just to support their schools. I don't know. I mean, those are things that we could talk about. Yeah.
Is there, is there room on this property to add another building at all?
Nervous that you eliminate the park and everything else is there.
Is the park ours?
I don't know, but the park is Jackson County.
Jackson County.
We put the skate park there as well.
Skate park is ours and the pool. So the adjacent acre and a half is in Jackson County.
Yeah, all you have is room for the pool. You can meet in, have community meetings in, and yeah, you got a tough battle.
Yeah, we support the VA as well. I mean, it's a very valuable resource for them for the hours that they're there. I mean, there's a lot of people that would be impacted, but, I mean, at the end of the day, I don't, I don't know how long.
The partnership with the VA, is that the people just come over as part of the rehab? Or is that part of the?
They do, they come over a couple of days a week. They pay us a pretty good chunk of change to have the pool completely to themselves. So we only staff it with a lifeguard, we don't staff an office person. If I happen to be there, I stay in the office, I let them do what they want to do, I mean, because that's, that's the model that their preference and we continue to support that. And it's been the same lifeguard that's worked with them for many, many years. So it's very comfortable for them in that group. And, you know, again, those are things that I want to honor, but, you know, if we can't support it, you know, it would be nice to be able to pick up the folks too, you know? Kind of a period, so.
Well, let's, should we move this to, thank you so much.
Yes, welcome.
I really appreciate it. Heather, this has been really kind of enlightening for, I think, all of us. We just assumed it was doing awesome and you guys just wanted the pool and it was going to be amazing and that's kind of not what we got. So I really appreciate this because it lets all of us put our thinking caps on and try to think about different options.
For sure.
So we'll, should we move this to the work session or should we move it to the regular board meeting to talk about it more?
I don't know that we actually have anything to talk about until they come back with the salute, you know, some answers.
Right.
Well, I think we need to take a position on it. One of the things going through my head of this is that we had approached them in last spring when this thing was going, starting to go sideways. And we had, we had contacted the YMCA and we were ready to, they would turn it back over, we would give it, create a deal with the YMCA and we'd keep on running down the road. And one of the things I heard today is evidently that's no longer on the table.
It could be, it's just not the members' preference for sure.
Yeah, it very much could be. They, when I spoke with Brad, they were very much interested in a White City location and expanding their influence and ability to support communities. So, yeah, they, I think they were very much interested. Again, we're, the members were kind of looking at it going, well, but there's a lot of older people on our membership that really need the water temperature the way it is, because when it gets colder, we hurt. And, you know, we need those exercises and we're worried that the whole format would change if it went.
If it went wacky.
If it went to the way it is. That was, that was our main concern.
But I think the harsh reality is.
Yep.
If it's safe, it's harsh. That's the harsh reality.
Yes, it is.
And I would much rather partner with something like the YMCA or something like that than another school, basically.
Sure.
At the risk of losing our kids in our district to those other entities.
That's a good point, yeah.
You know, that's, that's my thought on it, is I would much rather partner with a community-based organization like the YMCA that already uses the gym at Hillside or did in the past for basketball, YMCA basketball. So they're in our community already. It just adds another aspect that saves a community pool.
And maybe that's your vote, I mean, not to, to interject, but I guess I am, but maybe that's the vote is, you know, do we cut our losses? Do we look at different alternatives while we can? Do we go to the Y because they're there and they're ready and they can plug in pretty quickly? I mean, and if the Y takes it over, obviously, I would like to have a conversation with them in the hopes that we can keep staff and we can keep the programming that we have and, you know, I don't, I don't know really what that would look like. I haven't had a conversation with the Y, that was before I joined. And I'm open to whatever, but I'm just at the point where, where I need some guidance because if this was strictly, you know, if we owned a property, then we would make those decisions ourselves and move forward in whatever way we could, but, you know, we need the guidance from you.
I think this really too comes down to the dollar amount, right? Are you talking a thousand bucks or are you talking a hundred thousand dollars? Like what are, what are we talking about? So I think that really comes to like, like, I, again, I would love to see us partner and do that. I, that's just me. I'm just one board member and I don't make financial decisions necessarily. So, um, you know, I want to know what the dollar amount is that you guys are looking for? What type of partnership it is that you're looking for? Like, I guess that's what I would like to see is, is a partnership presentation. What are you looking for to partner? I don't know if that needs to come to the board or does it need to go to Andy and Scott? I don't know where that needs to go first. Um, thoughts?
Well, I could definitely get you guys some, some financials that would give you kind of an idea. I mean, we, we run through quite a bit of money. And what I mean by that is we've got a good chunk of change that comes in and a good chunk of change that goes right back out. And so, you know, when all is said and done, it, it looks like there's a ton of stuff going on there. But in the end, as of the last six months, we made three thousand dollars for six months total. So.
And the problem isn't just financial, it's staffing, it's all of that, you know?
Yeah, because I'm going to spend more than that three thousand dollars to properly staff it.
Yeah.
And that's why the partnership in my mind with whatever organization was huge, that if you've got somebody that, you know, like getting, getting on a lifeguard certified, could she run down there and cover a break and then come right back to, to whatever she's leading at that point? I mean, there's solutions there that wouldn't require like it does now where I have to hire a whole new person and to overlap coverage sometimes to make sure that somebody gets a break, which is why it wasn't happening before. So those types of partnerships would, would be, would hopefully cost less to fill it correctly than what it costs me as an independent organization separate from any other entity. So you know, there's just things like that that I think would be substantial. And so covering, covering the office for one hour, which those are the kinds of gaps I have, you know? And is somebody going to want to work for one hour? Maybe. I do have people that literally work an hour a couple of days a week. Because I'll take them.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they even show up for an interview anymore, that's a fifty fifty.
And that's across the board.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not just there, that's just across the board, you know, with these small businesses and stuff like that or even larger businesses.
Or schools.
It's just a period. It's just the state that we're in. So, um, that's kind of where I'd like to see this go is, is the, like, what's a partnership presentation look like? What are your, what, does that need to go, can that come to the board or should that be a separate meeting with you guys first? I mean, where, or are we tabling this discussion to talk about it more at the next work session to decide if we want to see this presentation? I mean, this is, what do we need to do?
Why don't, why don't we do that?
Okay. Okay. So we're going to talk about this. We'll put this on the agenda to talk about for probably the next work session. And then we'll make that decision so you guys be thinking about that.
And in the meantime, we can meet, right? I mean, I really like that and we can obviously keep that loop.
Yeah, absolutely. I like to keep the door open too. And, um, and maybe some of your members would want to work for an hour. I don't know. You know, I mean, it, you know, you start getting really creative and really, you know.
Been doing that. A little bit during that.
And trying to make it happen. So ladies, thank you so much. This has been really a wonderful presentation. And with that, we're going to take a five minute break and come back and get this finished up, okay? All right. Um, yes, they, we're, we're doing, we're pounding through this meeting, you guys. Good job. Let's get back to it. Strategic plan update with Mr. Kovach.
Okay, so I handed out to you guys, I've also shared this document with you electronically, but you have a physical copy in front of you. This is the meat, uh, the strategic plan, the, the actual action plan piece of what we're going to do. There's going to need to be a lot of supporting pieces that would go with it, some sub-plans on different programs that we have. Of course, some organizational places, um, pieces of as far as, you know, how are we going to come back and, and hold ourselves accountable to the plan? How are we going to, you know, review it, um, going forward? The way it's organized is we have four priorities, which of course we all know, we were the ones that figured them out. And under each one of those, we have what we're calling an objective. So some, this is something that we would like to have achieved by the time, um, this plan's over with, which goes to, um, early 2024. And then we have beneath those objectives, those long-term objectives, we have the action plan for the current year. So what I envision is, is that we'll over, you know, we're going to go and add another action plan for next year and, and then a year after that and try to build it going forward on each one of the objectives that we have. Does that make sense? I know you guys, the time's short, so I'm trying to go a little bit quick here. So one of the, one of the things that we're running, or one of the things that I'm running into right now is this, two things. One, a lot of the things that when we created these priorities, we wanted to hit the ground running in August of this school year. And what I'm finding is that we're trying to keep the whole ship together with, with, it's taken every, all the energy that we have right now. So there isn't a lot of, of time, people, resources to be working, not only on just fleshing this whole thing out, but actually doing what it is that we're saying that we're doing. So, um, I'm concerned that we need to be cutting back on what we're going to be doing during this school year unless things change with the COVID. And then, so looking at each one of these pieces, my second concern is I'm the guy that's doing this right now. And then that's not the way to run the popsicles down. Now, you know, we need to have more people involved. This thing needs to be, um, to have a lot of, it needs a lot more work. Um, because I picked, um, oh, if you look on the second page there, in instance, one of the most important things in here is just where we're going to be on, on our test scores with students at a certain time. Well, um, if you look at the top, it says fifth graders meeting or exceeding state standards in the, and English language arts increased from thirty-nine percent to forty-four percent. Well, let's think about that for a minute. First of all, Andy pulled that hat out of, you know, pulled that, that number out of a hat himself and put it in, in there as a, as a thing. And that's, you know, it's based on, on my experience, what I think is, is possible, yada, yada, yada. But still, it's one person's opinion really is what we're looking at there. The second thing that's, that's going on with this is we don't have ASPECT scores for last year. We, so we will be comparing right now, we're going to start with spring of nineteen, I'm sorry, spring of twenty scores, which were incomplete at that time. Because we, before we sent the kids home, we had not completed all of our scores. Now those kids have been gone. They've come back in last spring. We're going to be able to have some scores this year, but we don't know where they're going to be. And it's quite likely, I would expect, they're going to be, as the school business, we're going to be below where we were when we got. I mean, that's just, that's just where we're at.
Is that based on the Oakes testing?
It's the same test.
Same tech.
Used to be Oaks, now it's called ASPECT.
Yes.
And, and the, the test changed and there's some technical stuff involved, but it's basically the same.
Yeah.
So, um, I think that's back, and I don't, I'm not saying that this is not what we need to go with. You have to set a goal. You have to get after it. We want to be working on it. But I increasingly see this as, as the action plan that we have as we go into next year is going to be when we really start to hit the ground. I'm thinking, okay, we're going to fight COVID for the first half of this school year. We're going to try and spend as we tend to during the second half of the school year. We're going to be trying to get these kids to the end of the school year and set ourselves up for this following school, the following school year. So almost a year from now, ten months from now is when, when we would be going. So a lot of what I see us doing right now is let's get all the pieces in place so we're not trying to build the thing when we're also running. Does that make sense? Okay, so my plan is, is, um, I would like to find opportunities to take this in front of, of as many key groups of people as we have. We have instructional coaches, we have our, our leadership team for the school district. We have specialists in many of the areas on here. Start seeing if we can flesh out just what, what is that we need to be doing now. We'll have our OSBA, OSBA training coming up in November. We'll put it in there. Give it a, a look with what we're calling our, our district vision team at that point. Put the, what, the bells and whistles that need to go in with this document so that it's a complete plan and then move forward.
So this is, you're, you're putting this together. You want to share this with the district training or vision team?
I do.
And then it would come, then it would go out to the rest of the district at that point? Is that the way that works?
It should work that way.
Okay.
But we're cheating a little bit.
Uh huh.
Um, so I would like, prior to that vision team, seeing that I'd like, um, different, um, people in our school district to look at it.
Okay.
And have input on, on.
On the goals, okay.
And then we've already started to promote the priorities themselves. So if, actually if you walk through my office, you'll see a poster that, that is in, is, was actually a prototype. That's going to be going out to all of our schools. It's going to start being in all of our documents so that our people, our teachers, our, our parents start knowing, oh, this is the district priorities. This is what they're about. This is where we're going. So we're kind of, we're, it, it's messy, but we're, we're, we're getting ahead on some of these things so that, um, because now's the time to strike.
So are you asking us to, are you asking that we don't approve this next month or are you asking us to approve it and then you're taking it out?
I think we have to approve.
Okay, okay.
Um, and I didn't, if, um, so I'm leaving this document with you. Of course, you have it electronically as well. And any kind of feedback, any kind of suggestions, any thoughts are, are more than welcome.
So if, if we're looking at it, we're giving you our approval or saying no, it doesn't have to necessarily be on air. It's like, we approve the basis of what you're going for. And then the vision team would be the one that would come up with a more specific set of goals and guidelines that you want to go with.
I, I do think that's true. I got to be, I got a little blunt with you is so there will be a tendency for our, for people that are going to be held accountable for this to want to maybe soften a little bit. So you guys as a board have to, you know, with, with wisdom have to say, no, this is, this is where we want to be.
Okay, yep, that makes sense.
And then, so, so Matt, like this actually should have how they're going to do it in it. Like that's what we're, we're kind of approving. So we set the, the goals and then Andy is giving us his strategic plan for how he's carrying out the goals. So, so that's what this is.
So we're approving that plan actually for those goals?
The whole, the, the whole thing. I do think that there could be maybe a little bit of, you know, as it goes on, like how it really like, because we're trying to keep the school district running through COVID and vaccines and all that kind of stuff. So, um, but definitely read through this and if you have any questions, you know, call me, call Andy, call anybody. And talk more about it. But this is, is how we're doing it. So we set the goal and this is how the plan is to do it.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good. Any questions?
I know what it means, Sheri.
Yeah. Sheri's like.
Should we just make the appointment?
Why don't we just meet right after?
I gotta read her.
Just read it with him, Sheri. Does he sit in the office? Okay. Um, review of hiring policies. Mr. Swearingen is not here.
So he is beyond underwater right now. He's, he's the meat dog for us on, on the vaccine, vaccination, um, work that we have to do, managing that whole piece. He had scheduled himself, um, through the entire week. He just does not have time to be. So we can kick this back to another, to another time and, and, um, our future meetings, if that's okay.
And these are all the, sorry.
We definitely need to do this, um, sooner than later because this opens up the, kind of opens up the playbook a little bit for him. So that he can be more fluid on some things when we're faced with, streamlining the process for him getting hired so it doesn't take two months.
Two months.
To have a school bus driver to bring the kids to an activity.
Yep.
That already has all the credentials for currently as a school bus driver somewhere else. And it still takes.
Two months.
That's, that's like, come on back, yeah, let's go. So I, I really would like, let's move this along best.
Okay.
I'll pass that long term drive.
Oh, it's dedicated to the training. Well, maybe we need to just, so Stacy's saying that our November work session is dedicated to, um, our training. So we won't have a regular work session. We'll just have.
We had said we.
Do a small one.
Half hour, forty-five minutes.
Quick. The training, so we aren't here all day. So then that leaves us getting pushed to December. Or we can put it into a regular meeting. And this one, like you guys get to decide what, where you want to put this. It does have to have two readings because they're not all listed in this. This isn't counting as a reading, correct?
This is just for review and a conversation.
Just review and a conversation.
There are no changes to any of these policies. So if you are looking to make a change, changes would be made, you would review and then pass. So we can be potentially looking at January before we will be fully, not any changes early.
So the only other way then for us to push this would be if we add it to our regular session for October and then we ask for whatever changes needed to be made in October and then we brought it forward in November and voted on them, correct?
You could ask for changes between the October meeting and the November work session. That could be your first reading and you could vote on changes.
At the November.
I don't know if, um, Ryan's going to be ready for that. I hate to make that decision without him, um, being a, a part of that conversation. So I don't want to add more to him. I talked with him about this for quite extensively, about this and what we can do and, um, about streamlining some of the processes so that we can get it squared away. So I know he's, like you said, underwater right now. He's got a lot of stuff on his plate. So I don't know if that's necessary. I know I'm saying that I want to get, get going on this and I want to streamline it, but I really, I think it's important to have his input on this.
You could also have a special meeting. You could put a special meeting somewhere on the calendar. And the focus would be reviewing policy.
Got it.
Why, so why can't we just add this to our October meeting? Have Ryan talk on this and then he's going to be available. We could ask him questions on it at that time, right?
Yes.
Is that possible? And then, um, then we can start formulating a plan and if it ends up being January, then it's in January. It's still only one month later than December, right? But we can still, we're still moving forward on it. I think it's important that everybody's involved with this thing just so that, especially the hiring department, that's our end HR guy, who should probably.
Right.
Needs to have the most of our this and I might go up with his recommendations and then ask, be able to ask questions off of that.
And we can do a special meeting, like we could just do an extra special meeting real quick and, and vote on these or something if we wanted to push it before January depending on. So adding it to the regular session in two weeks. We'll have Ryan present on it. So take, take a minute to read through these.
A minute? I, I scanned it real quick.
Okay.
Drug policies, holy moly.
And.
That's the problem, he has to go through and start a single page. Yeah. It was like.
So, and you guys can look like the drug and alcohol testing that was re, did you, uh, was read adopted on the, um, in two thousand and twenty. So, and that was the, been read adopted quite a bit. You know, you can kind of look and see on that top page when they were most recently kind of looked at. So, um.
Emily, if I may, and then also at the bottom of each policy, um, well, whatever, wherever the last.
The last.
End of policy, you will see statute. So it will tell you the legal references because there are some things in policy that cannot be changed. Um, so you have the references there.
Okay. Okay, so we'll put this on our next, on our next board meeting to have Ryan present. Do you think he'll have a problem with that two weeks from now with everything else he's got going on?
No, I think he'll be pretty patient.
He'll be ready? Okay, perfect. And then, um, OSBA, anything else on that before we move? Okay, OSBA services discussion. It says me, but it's really kind of Stacy because she's got all of the info on it. I, so, um, Stacy, could you let us know what we get, how much it costs and all that stuff from OSBA?
Okay. Uh, so for this past year, um, our expenses with OSBA were ten thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. That would include our membership dues for one year and those are five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
That would include our membership dues for one year, and those are five thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Within that membership, we pay separately for our policy update and our web hosting. And we pay thirteen hundred dollars per year for that service. So that's where, whenever there's been a change to board policy, um, any of these ORSs that dictate a change to policy, they will send me the information, um, redlined with what the changes, the suggested changes are, what the required changes are. And then that's how it comes forward to the board for changes on the policy. Um, along with that, services are web hosting, where our policies are stored currently. Um, without that service, we'd be looking at something like a Google Drive to house PDF copies of all of our policy and then have a link on our website for people to be able to view our policies. Uh, Three Rivers School District does it that way, they don't use the web hosting. It's not as clean and pretty for people to find policy, but it's... Um, we also pay twenty-five hundred dollars a year for the Board Book subscription. Excuse me. And that is a service that I use to create the agenda. You all have access, that's up on our website for the, um, the public to view. It's a nice, easy, clean format. Again, people that don't subscribe to that will typically use some sort of Google Drive and PDF method of maintaining that on their websites. We pay, uh, eight hundred dollars of, including that ten thousand. It's for L-E-T-E district dues, and that stands for Legal Assistance Trust. And so those things that I just mentioned is what comprises the ten thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. These services, such as policy update, web hosting, Board Book subscription, are separate fees from our membership dues, but we don't get those if we don't pay the membership dues. So if we're not OSBA members, we don't get to say, oh, we just want policy or we just want subscription, um, for, for Board Book. It's all under the dues and, and the membership. Um, in addition to the ten thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars, we spent eight hundred and seventy-five dollars that has been paid to date for upcoming trainings. That's half of the training that was prepaid. That is refundable if by chance we were back out of that training and back out of, in sort of membership. We can cancel if we want that money to the district.
Are we able to cancel the training but keep the membership?
We could do that too, if we don't want to go forward with the training. I believe it was within days of the training. I did not write down that date, I believe, but I can...
That's okay. No, I looked down. I just replied it down. You're good, that's totally good.
What was that, the date of the training?
The training that we have in November is how do we monitor the strategic plan? How does the board, you know, look at the data to monitor the strategic plan?
And then in addition to that, there are some other services through our membership with OSBA that's gotten definitely sleep on too.
Probably the biggest thing is our access to PACE, our liability, property and coverage and liability insurance. That's a not, it's not the profit. It's a insurance, it's, it's a cost-sharing pool, not necessarily an insurance company. So it services basically, um, school districts and another arm of that group services cities and counties statewide. So, um, that's, that would be the biggest, from my view, the biggest blow to the district is losing that coverage. The Legal Assistance Trust, as Stacy mentioned, is a big part of it as well. Small P there, we have access to attorneys' courts, calling and asking for advice. They represent us in various cases. The biggest one, back when we had the strike, uh, the lawsuits that came from that went all the way to the ninth district. Appeals. Pace covered that, that would be out of our profit. Time, time and energy for staff to be part of it, but the, the Legal Assistance part is not, is not part of our expense, so... Pace would be the biggest thing to consider, sure. I would gulp twice if you had that direction, sure.
Do we know what the cost of insurance that's comparable, what that would run versus that?
I, I did call our agent, uh, last week and haven't heard back, but, um, it is an issue. I mean, I, I know the letter that went out was, probably should've been worded differently or whatever, or directed to, who would need to, to be directed to, but not, not in mass. But, so they're, they're getting a lot of calls on it, I think. If it's tough to, um, his initial purchase, he's, he's gonna try and, there are carriers that will cover. They'll take, there are carriers that cover, you know, private schools and, you know, so there are carriers out there. To get the same type of coverage, he, he's gonna, it's gonna take a little while to get, to get a good estimate, so...
And the last time we used that legal service was during the strike? Or have we done that, used that service since?
Um, it's, it's every year something comes up. It seems like there, there's always, I mean, for, for HR type things, we normally use a different, a hungerford law firm. So for, um, help with bargaining, um, terminations, you know, things like that, we, we do have another service that would go with. But we do, um, use them fairly often.
At least once a year? More than you said? More than that?
Yeah, a, a good quote or an estimate for replacing our property and liability coverage, I'd have to, is still off the way, so...
So, I wanna be clear with you, I wanna make sure you guys understand that the PACE, the insurance piece, we get our liability and our property through that. In July, we paid somewhere in the nature of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to, to PACE, to the OSBA for our coverage for till next July. At the end of the year, we will give some sort of a refund bet, uh, from that back. If we were to withdraw from OSBA now, we would not get that refund. And that was, I, I, it was in the tens of thousands, that was around forty, fifty?
It's a forty thousand a year per cell. The return of premium based on their...
Based on their loss?
Yeah. And so it's a, it's a good program, it's, you know, and not, not the profit, obviously. So there's, there's that profitability out there, so the premiums are cheaper anyway. Uh, but, you know, that return of premium is a, a big bonus.
So, so I think that there's probably, if the board decides that they do wanna withdraw from OSBA, uh, there's probably a point where they should consider the timing of when they would wanna do that. Whether, um, next July might be more beneficial for us at that point. We'd also have better information on the other piece. There's really two paths that, that, um, we could go other than OSBA. We could go through a, a private, our private agent, as Matt was calling, we're waiting to hear back from them, find out what that cost is gonna be. Or you could do a coalition with other school districts like ourselves that would, could form their own group or, uh, that do, that could go out and self-insure. I've had some, some conversations with other superintendents, including the superintendents most closest to us here. There isn't a lot, I'm not getting any kind of a hint that anybody's interested in going down that path, but...
Um, I was actually surprised how little we spent with OSBA. I thought it was gonna be quite a bit more. Um, the thirteen hundred dollars for the policy and the web design or whatever, that's, that's not very much money for what we get. Um, using Board Book as well for that twenty-five hundred dollars is such a load off of Stacy. I'm not, and just for all of us, you know, to be able to navigate through it. I don't know if you guys have looked at other school districts and their, call it, their, um, agendas? They're not awesome when they're not using Board Book. It's hard to navigate, they can't, you know, um, uploading different things. I'm, I'm annoyed, right? Like, I, I'm the one that brought this forward, I'm annoyed with OSBA, I really am. But just because I'm annoyed with them, I'm not gonna, I don't feel like, um, I feel like the risk-reward ratio here is not, um, you know, enough. If we were spending a hundred thousand dollars with OSBA and there was ways for us to do other things, uh, that would probably change my opinion on it. Um, I, I did send you all an email that I got this, this morning from Jim Green. I do think, you know, after seeing his response, um, which I talked to Jim maybe once, um, or, or twice, um, you know, his response was very nice and reasonable. Not that that should be a surprise, but, you know, sometimes it can feel that way, you know, when we're so detached, um, from north, the north, um, area. And I guess I would encourage all of us that when you see something coming from OSBA that you don't agree with, um, send them an email back and say, I, I, you know, you're not supporting our area, you're not supporting what we're thinking, and, and start voicing our opinions more. That's what that email to me said. Um, I was surprised to get an email back. Um, I've, I've emailed before and haven't gotten an email back, but I think that it's the same with emailing the governor, emailing your legislators, emailing your senator, email whatever. You know, that like, even though you're not getting a response back all the time, it doesn't mean that what you're saying isn't being heard. So I guess that's, I guess where I'm at. I'm, I am, I do typically really like the trainings, um, but I'm, I'm, I don't know. I, 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 I don't know, what do you guys think about still doing the tr- where are you guys, where are you guys at, bless you? That's, that's kinda where I'm at. I think maintaining our membership with OSBA at this point is probably a good idea, especially in light of, you know, our PACE coverage and, and the credits back and things like that. I'd be up in the air to discuss, you know, doing further trainings with them. Um, where are you guys at?
Rocking a hard place. I'm curious, how many districts throughout the state don't use OSBA? Just, just as a curiosity, 'cause I, I'm, I'm with Emily on this, I don't think we should go away.
I think they're just a handful, ten or less.
And how do they get around all this other stuff? And, and, and what is their reasoning? Is it because they don't like their policies? Is that... That's kind of a, a guesstimate of their reasoning.
So I'm not sure that there's any school districts that don't belong to the OSBA. It does raise its head fairly frequently, but it's usually larger school districts such as Portland that could, I mean, theoretically, they can self-insure themselves. Um, and then, I, but I don't know the answer to that piece. I do know that there's districts that don't partake of some of the services. For example, Three Rivers does it. I don't know the number of those, really.
They might, they might, they might be a member of OSBA, but they don't use the web hosting. They don't use the...
Correct.
The trainings, they don't...
Yes.
You know, sign up for those other things. So it's not like we could just walk away from them anyway? But we could certainly limit what we do with them, correct?
But if you're gonna not use any of their services, why would you, other than maybe you would maintain membership for your PACE coverage? So you would maintain your membership to get your PACE coverage, but you wouldn't use any of their other services?
Yeah.
And I, I do think, you know, um, Matt, did you, have you seen a training? Did you do any training? So, I mean, I, I do feel at some point that the trainings are, are helpful, you know, learning how to, how to monitor the strategic plan, but I, I am, I'm also, um, I also could be probably talked out of it. So, um, I don't know.
You know, there's one other way to look at this too. Um, you know, we're in a time where people are angry and frustrated and I think virtually all of us in this room fall into that category. The OSBA is, is a coalition of Oregon school districts and, and we may feel in need right now to walk, to pull back from them, but there's also the opportunity to maybe look at the other direction of, of leaning into them. Uh, I, I know Jim Green. I, I went to high school with him, I've known him for years. We're not fishing buddies or anything, but I know he's a good man. Uh, I think he would welcome opportunities to, to empower people on this board as well. I mean, they have a board, they have committees that do work, you know, with the OSBA that set the direction that the OSBA goes. It happens to be up north, which tends to be maybe a more liberal part of a state, so that there is probably a tendency for there to be more people of that ilk on, on those boards. But there's no law that says, um, you know, a Randy Wolf or Sherry Strittenberg or even a Josh Graves could be on, you know, the OSBA board.
And there weren't any of those positions open this go-around, but, um, you know, next year. And there, there is a legislative, maybe stuff might be open in our area, but I don't think any of the board members are...
Here's the way I look at this, it's, um, I was taught a long time ago that, um, whenever you're, if you're gonna be successful at something, then you go at it from a business aspect. Um, after the information that I was given today, um, going away from the O-SBA is a death sentence as far as the business aspect. So, um, I'm not in the principal business, um, and I'm not trying to set a, um, you know, because of principle. Um, so I can put my big girl panties on and get over a, an email that I didn't particularly care for, um, to, and take one for the team so that we can have a successful business, and that's just based on dollars and cents. Um, that doesn't mean that I have to like it, or that doesn't mean that I, um, won't or haven't already sent an email, uh, back, which I did immediately, um, within thirty seconds of receiving the first one. Um, clearly stating where I stand on the whole thing. And I, I'm okay with that. Uh, and I was open to hear some of the, uh, the information that was given by Mr. Whitman and by Ms. Morgan, um, today, um, from the OSBA. But after hearing that information, um, I, I think it would be fruitless to continue to go away from the OSBA because just the, the, the actual coverage that we use on a regular basis. If Scott tells me that we haven't used that, we haven't used the, used any of that stuff since two thousand and one, you know, and don't really know why we pay for it, well, then, okay, that's a different conversation. But the amounting of legal fees and stuff like that, that changes your financials significantly that based on another strike or something along those lines, where you're paying for a bunch of lawyers that are just gonna eat away at your pocketbook. So that's where I stand on the whole thing. Um, I, I think we just suck it up, get over it, send an email back and turn the page.
Do you guys wanna continue with the training? But is, how much money did we...
Um, so, we were paying a total of seventeen hundred dollars, but we were getting a scholarship that was part of that DEM...
Seventeen thousand or seventeen hundred?
Seventeen hundred.
Okay.
Seventeen hundred. So it is part of the DEMSP training.
Yes.
And if we complete the training, then we will get one twenty-five hundred dollar scholarship for students in our district.
So the training is virtually seventeen hundred dollars for all of those hours? It's not more than that? And then we get a scholarship?
Yes.
Okay, so...
I think we're doing India, uh, injustice if we don't do the training and the rest of our administrative team so that we can honestly and correctly evaluate what's going on here.
Yeah.
Um, because to be honest with you, Andy could say, yeah, this is the way to go, Josh, and I'm gonna go, oh, okay. 'Cause I don't have a degree in education, I'm just, I just, I'm pooping for a living. So I don't know.
And you're very successful.
I'll have a question.
You're gonna show up on a job.
Funny, but like, I, 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 I think we're doing the rest of our administration team and, and our superintendent, uh, this, or an injustice if we don't do the training so that we know what to look for, um, so that we can go, hey, this is on here, and then go, you did do this, or this is what this, or that you did a great job, or whatever. Um, I, I think that's the right way, right thing to do, that's my, my belief on the whole thing.
I agree with Josh. It's already a process, I say we go ahead.
Okay. I just felt like we needed to retouch on it again, just in light of everything that's been going on. So I'm totally fine with that. So we'll just, there was our discussion, we're keeping it, we're moving forward, and I just wanna, you know, encourage all of us, like, you know, Josh did, and I know Sheri talked about it. And, you know, if you guys see something coming, I think the only way that we're gonna really make the changes to advocate, you know, for, for our kids, for our district. Okay, upcoming consent agenda items, presenter?
Yes, Morgan. Uh, so we'll have the personnel action report, and I just tossed on here the strategic plan. Would you guys like to see that on the consent agenda? Where we just, you guys review this, we send your questions to Andy between now and the board meeting, and it just is approved in that consent agenda process? Or do you want it as separate, so you can have this?
I think we need to have it as separate. We spent a lot of time working on it, I think that it needs to give, have its own thing.
Okay, so at this time, the only thing on the consent agenda then would be the personnel action report.
Okay. Sounds good? Um, then I think we're adjourned, 'cause we'll, we'll add anything that we wanna talk about at the end of the next meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, thank you guys very much, this meeting is adjourned. Secretary, please stop the recording.